Good evening.
Recording in progress.
It is the October 1st, 2024, meeting of the Lewisville City Council. And let's take a roll call.
Mayor Lee.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dickinson. Councilmember Fahy.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffner.
Here.
Councilmember Biermann.
Okay, thank you. Let's join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag for the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Seeing none. Next, we're at the part of the meeting which is public comments on items not on the agenda and items on the consent agenda. Public comments are limited to three minutes each, or six minutes if you pool time with somebody else who's either here or online that you can point to and they would confirm if asked that you are pooling time with them. If you are interested in speaking on a matter not on the agenda or not or on the consent agenda, please grab a card from the table right outside the chambers and give it to our clerk and she'll read off your name. You can come up and speak. If you do speak, should state your name and where you're from. We don't need to know your address, just which town you're residing in. You don't have to take the full three minutes. If you pool your time, you don't have to take the full six. And we sometimes have, you know, multiple people come up and talk on the same topic and they say, you know, what the last person said, just, you know, and that's their public comment and that's fine, too, or you can do whatever you like. As to the rest of folks, I would appreciate it if you not clap or holler or boo or whatever because it makes it difficult for those who are here to feel comfortable coming forward and speaking. And we want to get the widest possible participation. So as many of you know who've done this maybe before, you can probably think back to the first time you did it. It might have been a little bit nerve wracking. We don't need any more of that than is absolutely necessary. So with that, do we have any public comments on items not on the agenda?
Yes, first up is John Sullivan, followed by Ken Roberg.
Can we make sure your mic is on? I'm not sure it is. I want to make sure we can hear you. Sometimes, usually, there we go. There's a little light there.
Can we go back to zero on my time?
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
You can go back to, we're not going to take that.
John Sullivan, my wife and I live on Sycamore Lane. I'm here again to speak about Via Appia. I'm asking you to direct Public Works to prepare a proper plan for evaluating this, which is called a pilot project. I'm also asking that the speed limit, the entire length of Via Appia, be reduced to 25, which is the same speed on the nearby Pine Street, which is a much less complex drive. On the website, it states they will collect data periodically on traffic, speed, and volume. No criteria for using this data is given. The city of Littleton has posted a report of a pilot project for what they call traffic calming on a neighborhood street. They list four criteria. Two of them deal with the speed, observed speed after, reduction of observed speed after the pilot project. And the third deals with increase in the volume of pedestrian and bicycle traffic. The fourth deals with support by the community, which they require 50%, and two-thirds support by neighbors adjacent to the street. Presumably, these data are collected by survey, not by a show of hands at a local meeting. Regarding the tragic accident on Via Appia, I have not seen lately any posting of a report by the police department or Public Works as to investigation lessons learned. Wes Marshall, who's a professor at CU Denver, said they've done all the good work on designing for safety, now they need to reduce the speed. It's a matter of physics, he said. The director of Public Works called me about, I believe it was, two months ago. He told me there are three reasons they could not reduce the speed on Via Appia. One was it would require the approval of the city council. Please give your approval. The, it's necessary to have an objective evaluation of any pilot project to determine whether a design change is dictated. And as far as I know, there is no such plan for evaluating or criteria specified. Take a drive down Via Appia during rush hour, even in the middle of the day. See how difficult it is to say, come on Tyler, Tyler, and turn left for the rec center, which I do almost daily. And maybe you'll see why I think the speed limit needs to be reduced. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
After Ken Roberg is Robert Tully.
I'm Ken Roberge. I live in Lewisville on Golden Eek Way. I'm a person who sometimes rides my bicycle and often walks on the public trails, primarily near Heckla Lake. I also live adjacent to the trail that goes from Heckla west to 95th Street, along the irrigation canals. So I have a pretty good perspective on who uses those trails. It's a heavily used trail, shared by children, dogs, senior adults from Balfour, many with various disabilities. There's a blind walker that uses the trail frequently. There's kids and dogs and, yes, bicycles. What I often see, and sometimes in my personal experience scares me, many bicyclists ride very fast past the other trail users despite the fact that because the trail is primarily gravel in many places, their ability to stop or change direction is significantly impaired. Many do not even announce their presence, although at the speed they travel, it may not make that much difference. That coupled with the inability to hear, slow reaction times, and limited mobility of some adults, and me included, and the unpredictability of children and pets creates a high risk of conflict and injury. A number of my neighbors have also complained about this and I feel like I'm representing some of them tonight. I've been thinking about a way to minimize the risk while being fair to all the users. And here's what I suggest. I recommend that Lewisville create an ordinance, something like, on all public mixed-use trails, operators of bicycles, scooters, and other wheeled vehicles, whether motorized or non-motorized, must, number one, reduce their speed to five miles per hour or less and clearly announce their presence, both within 50 feet of pedestrians or animals or when visibility is less than 50 feet. I think this is fair to cyclists because they can go as fast as they want when there is no danger to anyone but themselves. It should have little impact on commuting times during periods of low pedestrian usage. Oftentimes, there's nobody on those trails. During times of high pedestrian usage or any time that speed is important, for example, for an aerobic workout, cyclists are certainly free to use the streets and the roads, which are much better suited for high speed. The five mile per hour, 50-putt numbers were just numbers that I suggested because this is still faster than a fast walking pace and fast enough from my experience to ensure stability for the cyclists. It also allows more than six seconds to get dogs or children under control so as to safely get out of the way. But your professional traffic engineers, I'm sure, can certainly research this and analyze the trade-offs better than I. I'm happy to discuss the proposal in person.
Thanks.
And have you come out and I can show you what I see on a daily basis.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your consideration.
Next up is Robert Tully, followed by Mike Duborsky.
Hello, my name is Robert Tully. I live at 733 McKinley Avenue in Lewisville. And I was hoping for 15 minutes of fame, but I'll take the three. I'd like to propose a remedy to a problem that I know you're all familiar with, which is affordable housing. My family's lived in town for 32 years and during that wonderful time, I've become concerned that children who grow up here can't afford to buy homes and stay. And people of middle incomes who work here can't really buy a place where they work. The irony is we have several hundred old homes that are being demolished and replaced with homes that cost a million plus. This is a steady process that I think will transform Lewisville tremendously over the years. Not all of this change is bad, but having opportunities for grown children, for workers to live in town, and for a sense of history are all in the public interest. So my proposal would be to preserve some of the older houses as starter homes and as downsizing homes for older people. Where else are we going to get a pool of starter homes? The land is too scarce to, and the builders aren't really interested in creating such a neighborhood. We already have a pool of these homes, so let's save some of them. How to accomplish this? I think just in my initial thinking, there might be three ways. The most direct method, if the city purchased homes, placed a deed restriction on them, limiting demolition and expansion, and resell the home immediately to limit the public investment. A point system could be given, could give preference to buyers who work in town already, children or parents of families who already live here, and to middle-income families. Secondly, the city could offer significant financial rewards to existing owners of small homes to accept a deed restriction. This could appeal to retired owners and others who don't want to move but would like to get some cash out of their house. And thirdly, an idea might be to offer incentives to all buyers to keep homes within the current footprint or slightly larger. To cover such program expenses, the city could explore the affordable housing funds that are coming available.
Thanks.
And.
Yeah, we're going to have to cut you off.
Okay.
But thank you. If you have more, by the way, and this goes for anybody who gets cut off by the ogre up here, and I don't mean the clerk, I mean me, please send them to us and we'll take. Thank you very much.
I will do that.
Next is Mike Duborsky, followed by Susan McCarron. Thank you.
Mike Duborsky, 601 Pine Street. Just came from my plant down here at Old Style Sausage, so didn't have the time to shine up, but I'd like for you to enjoy a pickle. A few of you are familiar with our family's natural ferment, locally raised pickles that are only available seasonally. We'd love to take that to market. Love to do that through Joe's, Recreating Joe's Italian Market. Robert, and probably many of you that have lived here at least 20 years, we remember Joe's on Main Street. I captured some of the equipment from there. I'd love to repurpose it and kind of create and celebrate our heritage, the foods of our past here in Lewisville and make them available and let them live forward. You probably saw my letter about a month ago directed to Director Zaccaro regarding our desire to create that space at Old Style Sausage. And it'd be doing that through expanding our existing operations and more so location. And I really appreciate that Director Zaccaro has opened the door and found a way that maybe be a path forward for us to be able to create our vision that we've had for 15 years. I've started this with Paul Woods, our planning director, 15 years ago, and then with Troy Russ, and now with Director Zaccaro's help, we hope to be able to put a concept plan in front of you in the next 30 days or so when the agenda allows. Enjoy the pickle, please.
Thanks, Mike. I'm glad you didn't put us into a pickle. Tough crowd.
Next up is Susan, followed by phone number 303-905-9962.
Hello, I'm Susan McCookern. I'm a Lewisville resident and I'm chair of the Open Space Advisory Board. And I'm here today on behalf of the Open Space Advisory Board regarding our recommendation of earlier this summer that rodenticides be banned across all public and private properties in the city of Lewisville. You have the memo that we sent out in August, but I wanted to speak to a wider forum and just have everybody here understand that most of the municipalities around us have banned rodenticides and use carbon monoxide if prairie dogs and other rodents do have to be eliminated. But, you know, we would certainly advocate that they be removed instead of eliminated. They can be placed with areas that are building a black-footed ferret population, or they can be used as food for black-footed ferrets that are being reintroduced into the wild. So in the memo, I won't go into great detail here, but Broomfield, Lafayette, Boulder have all eliminated the use of rodenticides, which are not only a horrific way of killing an animal, but are also toxic to any other creatures, including humans, that come into contact with it. And I'm really delighted that the city does not allow the use of rodenticides on public lands, but we would really encourage council to direct staff to look at ways that this can be expanded to private properties on the, in the city limits as well. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Susan.
The person that was on the phone dropped off, so next up is Josh Cooperman.
Hello. This is Josh Cooperman. I live in Lewisville. I would just like to make one brief comment regarding item E on the consent agenda, which is about the landscaping services for parks and open space. Last month, at the Sustainability Advisory Board meeting, we had a very nice presentation from our Parks Superintendent, Abby McNeil. And she told us about how the Parks Department has basically replaced all of the equipment they can, they pretty much possibly can at the moment, that was previously powered by gasoline with versions that are now just powered by battery electric. And she even talked about some of the larger equipment that they're testing out and will hopefully be integrating into the city's fleet. And she also talked to us about this maintenance agreement and how the contract calls for whoever we hire to abide by the new state law, which requires certain pieces of equipment to be electric during the summer months. So the Sustainability Board was very pleased with her presentation and with the progress that the Parks Department has made. And in particular, it really seems like Abby has become a real champion for electrification of landscaping equipment, which is, which I think is great. I just wanted to make one small comment about the maintenance agreement. I kind of had hoped that, in a similar way to what we did with the trash services, that we might have put out a bid, which was kind of an aspirational bid, asking for even more use of electric landscaping equipment. You know, maybe we wouldn't have gotten any bids along those lines, but, you know, I think Superior has put out bids along that line and gotten some, some actual bids coming back. So I think for the future, it'd be nice to think about that, but that's all I have to say. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Josh. Anyone else online? Looks like anyone here? Nope, looks like we're good. Thank you very much to all those who've spoken either online or here. Appreciate and take close notes about what people say. And I do always appreciate, I think we always appreciate suggestions for remedies of problems. It's good to raise problems. It's good to advocate on various grounds. It's also nice to have some folks who've thought through, gee, this could be something we could do about it. And I think almost everybody today has done that, so I really appreciate that. And I think I probably speak for most of us here, if not all of us. All right, then we will move on to the consent agenda. And can I get a motion for approval of consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Same for council informational comments not on items not on the agenda. Yes, Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you. So I have an update from the Boulder County Homeless Workshop, where I've been serving as the elected individual representing the city of Lewisville. Just a little bit of background on this. The Commissioners recently launched this workshop with the goal of exploring interest in a regional approach to homelessness, and if so, what exactly would that look like? It's important to note that a regional approach would not remove the ability of each municipality to continue on with their own individual work. And a regional approach would also continue to recognize that each municipality has different resources, that it may or may not be able to contribute to a regional approach. So in representing the city, I've been working closely with my fellow council members. I've been consulting with staff who have some feet-on-the-street experience with this topic, also residents through direct conversations and gathering information through prior surveys and such. We've had two meetings thus far. Our next one is coming up in a few weeks, in October. There seems to be general consensus around the idea of a regional approach for Boulder County. We seem to be circulating around the idea of that regional approach focusing on structures and services is how I'm summarizing it in my mind. More to come as the conversation continues, but I just wanted the public and my fellow council members to get an update on that. The goal is in the next few meetings, we will have consensus on, A, if we move forward or not, and B, what exactly that would look like. I'm thinking of this as like almost a bat signal that they would send out when the conversation comes up of a structure or service. They send out that bat signal and us representatives come together and say, all right, that was one of the things we agreed on would benefit from a regional approach, let's talk about it. So if you have any questions, reach out to me. Otherwise, I'll keep the team posted as the conversations continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Mayor Pro Tem Dickinson is online.
Please, Mayor Pro Tem.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I was just raising my hand to get over to the panelist side. I don't have any comments at this point. I missed your offer to switch over. Thanks.
I'm not sure we caught that, Mayor Pro Tem. Can you repeat that?
I'm in the general attendance as opposed to panelist, so I was just raising my hand to get switched over. They attempted to switch me once and I missed it.
So I've, so I keep asking if you want to be a panelist, you need to.
There it is.
Okay, that was, for those who are uninitiated, that was a Zoom status inquiry. We have changed the Zoom status of one of our council members, an important one, to participate with the rest of us. I have a couple of things. One is, months after becoming mayor, I'm actually learning how to be one. There's a mayor's academy that is jointly sponsored by something called the Metro Mayors Coalition and the Colorado Municipal League. And they're doing a series of basically monthly meetings where most of the new mayors and relatively new mayors get together to talk about particular items. The last one was over on the Western Slope, and it was on water and energy. I just wanted to point out one thing that was really interesting about that. We went to Colorado Mesa University, which I'm now a big fan of. Just, they're doing some really incredible things, including basically providing college to many of those who had trouble as a result of the financial aid form disaster last year. If any of you have kids that age, you'll know what I'm talking about. But they, they do something really interesting that, I don't know if it might work here someday, but it's an interesting idea of do geothermal heating of a large portion of the campus, which actually is so good for them that it actually is helping to defray costs of tuition, but they put, they put out, they drill very big cylinders in the ground and they run water through, which generally heats the water, and they then use it to heat their buildings. And I'm over, way oversimplifying it, but it is just incredible. They've been doing this since 2007. But it's a kind of energy that I think, as we sort of look at our energy future, is something, you know, it'd be really interesting to know if there's any application here. And, you know, at some point, let me think about that. But I thought that that was a very good, something that I had learned that I hadn't known before. And a couple of us went over to a business called Chrysalis today, where we met with a business that is, how do we want to say, sort of doing research and development on fermented, what is the? Yeah, well, biofuels. That's a result of, what's the additive to? Biofuels, anyway. It's pretty astonishing happening right here in Lewisville, a very big project, and hopefully, again, will be one of those things that helps meet our energy demands in the future. It's a joint project of the National. It's a joint project of the National, or NREL from Colorado, and which is Department of Energy and that business. So very exciting stuff. Anyway, ethanol, that's what I was thinking, ethanol. So fermented ethanol. And it was, there's a literally a fermentation engineer out there. So, you know, I wonder whether he or she does any like home brewing, but we wondered about that today. Actually, that was a question that Director Zaccaro was asking quietly in the corner. Anyway.
Not so quietly.
Not so quietly. So anyway, that's what's going on there. Any other questions, comments for sharing on council comments? All right, good. All right, moving on to regular business. We have proclamation of Hispanic.
Mayor? I hate to interrupt, but the city manager.
Oh, just the city manager, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor.
Don't take offense to that. I just sit past you.
A couple of items, I'll be quick. I do want to highlight that our board and commission applications are now open online. So thank you to all of our current volunteers. We hope to get a good application pool. And if you're interested in city functions, please go online and consider submitting an application for our boards and commissions. I also want to highlight a couple of things for our police department. They're continuing their monthly community conversation series with a Coffee with a Cop at Ziggy's tomorrow morning on 1055 Courtesy Road from 9:30 to 11:00. This happens to coincide with National Community Policing Week's Coffee with a Cop Day. We encourage everyone to stop by, meet our officers, ask questions, and get to know our crime prevention staff. I want to highlight one more thing from the police department, and that is that they have received two e-bikes, which will be making their debut at Eco Toberfest this Saturday. And then a last plug, that this is Eco Toberfest Saturday, so please come on down and enjoy Eco Toberfest at Community Park. I believe that's 2 to 6 this Saturday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, now we can move on to the next piece, which is regular business. First is proclamation on Hispanic Heritage Month. And actually, I'd like, I think our police chief has graciously offered to read it, and then I'll do another version of it.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Proclamación del mes de la herencia hispana de 2024. En vista de que del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre se observa el mes nacional de la herencia hispana, celebrando la gente, las culturas, los logros y las contribuciones hispanas y latinoamericanas. Y en vista de que la observancia comenzó en 1968 como semana de la herencia hispana y luego se amplió a una celebración de un mes de duración. Y se promulgó oficialmente como ley federal el 17 de agosto de 1988. Y en vista de que varios países latinoamericanos celebran sus aniversarios de independencia el 15 de septiembre, entre ellos Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. Y que México y Chile celebran sus aniversarios el 16 y el 18 de septiembre, lo que coincide con la importancia de la fecha de inicio de la observancia. Y en vista que admitimos la importancia de reconocer la diversidad dentro de la comunidad hispana y latina, que abarca una multitud de países, lenguas, culturas, y tradiciones, todo lo cual contribuye al vibrante mosaico de la vida estadounidense. Y en vista de que reafirmamos nuestro compromiso de fomentar la inclusividad, promover la igualidad, y garantizar que las contribuciones de los estadounidenses hispanos y latinos sean valoradas, celebradas, y plenamente integradas en el tapiz de nuestra historia compartida. Y ahora, por lo tanto, el Consejo Municipal de la Ciudad de Lewisville, por la presente, proclama el 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre de 2024 el mes de la herencia hispana, fechado este primer día de octubre 2024.
Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is observed from September 15th through October 15th, celebrating Hispanic and Latin American people, cultures, achievements, and contributions. And whereas the observance began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week and was then expanded into a month-long celebration and officially enacted into federal law on August 17th, 1988. And whereas several Latin American countries celebrate their independence anniversaries on September 15th, including Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, with Mexico and Chile celebrating their anniversaries on September 16th and September 18th, aligning the significance of the observance, start aligning with the significance of the observance start date. And whereas we recognize the importance of acknowledging the diversity within the Hispanic and Latino community, spanning a multitude of countries, languages, cultures, and traditions, all of which contribute to the vibrant mosaic of American life. And whereas we reaffirm our commitment to fostering inclusivity, promoting equality, and ensuring that the contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans are valued, celebrated, and fully integrated into the tapestry of our shared history. And now therefore, the City Council of the City of Lewisville does hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month. I move for the adoption of the proclamation declaring September 15th through October 15th, 2024, Hispanic Heritage Month in Lewisville.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Thank you. And thank you, Chief. Again. All right. Next is Resolution Number 45, Series 2024. A resolution approving a master services agreement with Flock Group, Inc. for license plate detection software and hardware. And Chief, I'll leave it to you to start the staff presentation.
I'm Rafael Guterres, Chief of Police. The matter before you relates to the renewal of a service agreement with Flock Group Incorporated for license plate recognition technology and cameras. I'll provide an operational overview, discuss some of the ways we've used the system now and how it might be utilized in the future. The cost of this request is split over two years, 2025 and 2026, $67,000 per year for a total cost of $135,000. Here this evening with Scott Moore, who is our crime prevention, Department's Crime Prevention Specialist and Public Information Officer. Scott's also the system administrator for the Flock system at the police department, and he's going to discuss some of the technical aspects as well as some of the functionality of the system. The current system was implemented in the summer of 2022 after approval from City Council earlier that year. The project placed 20 cameras within the marshal fire impacted areas as a means to provide the police department with the ability to monitor these areas. The use of technology continues to assist law enforcement's effectiveness and efficiency, especially in times of staffing shortages and other challenges with resource allocation. Currently, there are 74 law enforcement agencies in Colorado that are using the Flock technology to include our neighboring jurisdictions of Lafayette, Broomfield, Boulder, University of Colorado Boulder, the Boulder County Sheriff's Office, including areas within Superior. Of these agencies, we do have the ability to share access to our data in the same way that we can also access theirs. We currently have not granted any access, nor do we share any of our data with agencies outside of the state of Colorado, nor with any federal agencies. Of the agencies that we do share information with, they're fully vetted and they're required to comply with our policies and use guidelines, and we can revoke their access to our data and our system at any time. I'm going to go ahead and invite Scott Moore up to discuss some of the system functionality.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Council. I've had lots of questions concerning the capabilities, the functionality, and also the safeguards that preside around the Flock system. So I'd like to share a little bit with you about those different topics. The basic function of the Flock system is to read license plates, recognize the vehicle that they are on by their type and their color, and then send a notification if they are cross-referenced with a hot list that may incorporate something that has to do with a criminal act or maybe a missing persons. The picture on this slide actually is one of the, example of one of the notifications that law enforcement will receive. As a car passes through a Flock camera, within 20 seconds of that car passing through that camera, the notification will be sent to law enforcement. Law enforcement can choose to get that in several different ways. They get it through email, they get it through text, they can get it through a notification through the app. There are criteria that a car has to meet in order for a notification to be sent. The hot lists include the NCIC, which is the National Information of Crime Center, the CCIC, which is the Colorado Information Crime Center, and it may also hit with the Amber Alert System, and also custom hot lists, which are controlled by the agency themselves through the Lewisville Police Department. If a custom hot list is generated that is due to a known license plate or a vehicle that may not reach one of those other criterias, but we need it to be on that list because we know that it's associated with something that's happened in the city of Lewisville. Notifications are also, there's criteria for that notification to happen. They have to meet one of these. Attempts to locate, a carjacking, felony warrant, a local warrant, a missing person, a stolen plate, a stolen vehicle, or that that license plate was used in a felony. Once an officer receives that notification, there has to be a human verification of that notification. Officers do not respond to notifications, they respond to the verification of that notification. When an officer verifies that, they must verify that that plate in fact is on one of those hot lists, that it does belong with that car, and that it also is not a misread from that camera system. Once an officer has verified, done a human verification of this notification, then they determine the proper response, which may be no response or may call for response to the location where that picture was taken. There's several different purposes for the Flock system. One is reactive and one is investigative. When we do an investigative search through the Flock system, these are the criteria in which that we can search from. The criteria we need are the vehicle make, we can search by the body type, we can search by color, we can search by license plates. And if we search by a license plate, it is temporary, regular, or state, by state that we can search by. So if there is no license plate, we can also search for vehicles with no license plates. The reason for this is, is when we have a witness that has identified a certain vehicle that we now needs to be looking for, we can then go into the system and search by the criteria the witness gave us to find that vehicle in that location. Here's an example on this slide of what our notifications actually look like. So I'm going to walk you really quick through this slide with the pink picture here, or I'm sorry, the green. You'll see that there's a plate that comes through on the notification. At that time, it'll also say exactly when the notification happened and how long ago it was. So when I took this screen grab, it was one hour after the notification came through. It tells me what hot list that it grabbed the notification from, it tells me what camera location it grabbed that picture, and then it actually gives us the picture of the plate and the vehicle and a map where that happened at. There are certain safeguards around our Flock system that are mandated both by state legislature and also by policy within the Lewisville Police Department. Some of those include, this does not do any type of facial recognition or person recognition within that vehicle. They do not collect biometric or sensitive data. They do not do speed enforcement or red light enforcement. They're not used for immigration enforcement, and they're not monitored by our staff. Some of the safeguards that also go around that pertaining to the data is data is stored for 30 days. Data is, at that point, is permanently deleted, and we can no longer go back to retrieve that data if we have not saved that to that point. If data comes through, we, through our investigation, we've done that human verification, it is something that we need to retain for an investigation at that point. We do have the option of downloading that certain data and then using that for records within the police departments to continue that investigation. I do want to read from the Flock's policy, privacy policy statement, so that we can learn more about what they do as far as the 30-day retention. The Flock privacy policy states, customer data is securely transmitted to the cloud with encryption status, stored for 30 days with a consumer-only assignment. Consumer is the Lewisville Police Department. And then permanently deleted. Flock deletes, or Flock defaults to permanently deleting consumer data after 30 days on a rolling basis. So 30 days from today, all of the data that was collected today will be permanently gone unless it's retained for an investigation. The policy states this as well. Flock customers own 100% of their data and determine who is the end user on the account. Flock does not share data with any third party. Any license plate data may be searched by authorized law enforcement. Also requires the jurisdiction to verify the legitimacy of the search and create an audit trail. All data that is accessed through our system does have an audit trail, and I do conduct an audit every 30 days on our system, and that is saved as well. Additionally, 30-day retention is considered best practices within the industry. For example, the purpose of Colorado Code 212-3-3-225 was actually created in order to regulate marijuana agencies, but in that, the rule also establishes the minimum guidelines for security requirements for video surveillance systems for maintaining accurate security. This law states, all surveillance recordings must be kept from, kept for a minimum of 30 days and be in a format that can be easily accessed for viewing. Another example, the state of, or I'm sorry, the state of Colorado, Colorado University Compliance Ethics Policy for Security Camera Procedures also states, data from their respective security cameras is retained for at least 30 days. One example of a neighboring community, the city of Lafayette, their camera policy actually states that any data collected from cameras cannot be kept for less, I'm sorry, more than Hot lists do require that human verification, so any data that is collected, any notification that comes through, when that notification is received from a police officer, law enforcement, they are then required to do that human verification. The system also requires that I do, or sorry, our policy also requires that I do keep that audit trail if that ever needs to be addressed. We also have a transparency portal that is accessible through the city website. On the transparency portal, there are several ways that our community can learn more about our system and also know real up-to-date information about how the system is being used. As you can see, at this time that this was taken, vehicles detected in the last 30 days was 32,517. Of those 32,000 vehicles, 232 actually hit on a hot list. This information can be accessed at any time from anybody that would like to access that through our website. This also is an easy way for our community to understand what our Flock system does and does not do. Many of those things that we just talked about, regulations, the capabilities of the system are listed on this as well, and our department policy link is also listed on this transparency website for anybody to access. And our department policy link is also listed on this transparency website for anybody to access. There are several different functions of this system. Uh, investigations is, is one of them. The Global News Wire conducted a independent study of Flock and how it's used and the results from different communities a, as they've used their system. A typical agency that adds one Flock camera for every one sworn officer that they have in their department can expect nine point one percent increase in solved cases in their community. In addition to that, if there is a, um, twenty cameras added for every fifty kilometers surrounding the, the agency that is implementing this, they can expect another one percent added to the clear rate or the solving of those cases. That's an additional ten percent of cases being solved because of the information gathered through the Flock system. Flock system is also used for missing persons, um, Amber Alerts or missing persons within the community. Uh, we've had several in the last couple of years, uh, that we've, we've had to, to go to our Flock system and Chief is actually going to talk about an example soon about how Avista used this for a missing persons case. Flock is also known to deter crime, just like a lighting will. And, uh, proper landscaping and the proper design of a community, things like this will also, camera system surveillance, um, systems will also deter crime within a community. Those are not quantifiable, so I don't have percentages for that. I'll turn it back over to Chief now to talk more about our system and how it's been used.
Thank you, Scott. Um, and just a point I wanna reiterate. Uh, these cameras came into vogue in about twenty thirteen and a lot of the privacy concerns were addressed at that point. Um, I know that agencies across the country have looked at privacy concerns and try to make sure that they're following the safeguards and, and, and best practices to make sure that data is not being misused, that they're securing it, that there is retention policies or sharing policies and things like that. And I think looking at the, at the agreement with Flock, you know, there is protections in there. There is standardization of what we're gonna do and what we can't do with that, that information. So, um, you know, as, as we evaluate and consistently evaluate this program, this project, any kind of implementation with the use of technology, we're always looking at it through the lens of what does this impact the community or how does this impact the community? And so, um, that, that's something that I, I do wanna highlight, that a lot has changed over the eleven years that these cameras first came into vogue. Um, there's a lot of safeguards in place. Um, and it really is, it's privileged information and, and as law enforcement, we have access to privileged information through the criminal justice system. So there are very similar safeguards in place about how it can be disseminated, how it can be distributed. Um, and so there's policies, there, there's things in place to try to safeguard that. Um, certainly policies are not a hundred percent foolproof. There are, are ways that, that people and, and agencies can circumvent policies and do bad things, uh, with bad intentions. But I can assure you that that's not our department. That's, that's something that I would hold us to an extremely high standard. I do hold our department to a string, extremely high standard. I hold myself to that same standard. Um, and so again, knowing the concerns of privacy, that's things that we wanted to ensure were, were highlighted in this presentation so that everybody had that awareness. Um, so just wanna highlight and touch on a couple of success stories. Um, this is not all-inclusive, but it does show, um, some of the effectiveness of using Flock within our community. Uh, in early twenty twenty-three, the fire rebuild areas experienced an increase in construction material theft. Um, these incidents are about twenty-one incidents over the course of six months. Um, detectives did use the system to identify a vehicle, link them to other similar events um, that were occurring across several front-range communities, all the way from Douglas County up to Laramo County. Uh, the vehicle was ultimately located through a custom Flock alert and Scott mentioned how an agency can put in a vehicle of interest license plate, which will then trigger an alert to whichever, um, jurisdiction they may happen to, to pass by, um, that has a Flock system. So we got the alert, this vehicle was in our community. Uh, officers were able to, to quickly respond to the area, located the, the suspect vehicle, which is that van there shown in the photograph. We were able to contact the occupants, we made several arrests. We found other stolen, uh, construction material within that vehicle as well as a, a handgun. So the, the use of the Flock system, we were able to link it to multiple instances of, of crime that were occurring in Lewisville, but also were able to link it to a regional, um, a regional crime spree for, for lack of a better term. And so I think that was one of the, the first successes that I saw when I came into this role here at Lewisville. Um, and again, I think it highlights the, the impact that, uh, these, these camera systems can make. Um, since that time, since the time of that arrest, uh, we can compare it to eight reports over the course of fourteen months. So that was a reduction of about sixty-two percent in construction-related thefts that were occurring within the, the, the fire rebuild area. So again, I see that as being a success, um, you know, in, in large scale. Uh, the next example is, is Scott alluded to Avista. And private organizations have the ability to purchase Flock camera systems. Um, they can then share that information with their local jurisdiction. So we do have a good partnership with Avista. Um, they alerted us to a vehicle that, that was, uh, an alert on their system, uh, of a missing person. Officers were able to get into the area, locate the vehicle, found that individual, were able to do a well-being check on that person, found out that that person was, was doing fine, everything was okay. They were then able to follow up and contact the reporting individual, um, and let him know that everything was okay with that person. So again, that's a success story. These can be used for senior alerts, these can be, can be used for Amber Alerts. And again, it's for operational awareness. If a vehicle that has an Amber Alert, um, or a Senior Alert comes into our community and is detected by the Flock system, we can get the alert that it's, it's in the area and we can start looking for, for that vehicle. Let's see. Apologies. Uh, the last story that's highlighted here is, is just another, uh, it's kind of a, uh, a crime spree type of incident. Again, there was an individual that was committing burglaries, um, across several counties, Jefferson County, Boulder County, Clare Creek Counties, uh, committed multiple burglaries within our community here in Lewisville. And with the use of the, the tool, we were able to identify that individual, uh, make an arrest, file charges. They were ultimately convicted, uh, and sent, sentenced to Department of Corrections. So again, those are, those are just some brief examples of the successes that we've had. Um, the, the systems are always also capable of locating stolen vehicles, which as you know, over the last few years has been, has been on the rise and, and has been at pretty significant rates within the state of Colorado. Um, so again, it's just another tool to, to allow us to know if a stolen vehicle is coming within our community. So what we look at next is, um, we're looking at kind of the next iteration or the next phase of what this could look like. So as you can see, we've had a lot of success with, with the camera's use in its current locations. Uh, it's a great investigative tool, it's great for alerting and for operational awareness. Typically, service agreements, contract-related service agreements, things of that nature are, are sent to the consent agenda because they're typically looked at as matters of routine business. And the police department wanted to present this information to council so that you've had an idea and understanding of what we, we've been using the system for in the two and a half years that it's been in place. Um, and then kind of looking at what the next iteration might, might be. In the rebuild area currently, there's eighty-two percent of the houses in those areas, um, are either completely rebuilt or are under construction. So that increases what we call natural surveillance. So residents, community members are back into their homes, they're, they're able to monitor and see what's going on within these neighborhoods, which leads to their observing incidents from occurring and then reporting that to police. So, so that's a good thing, that's a positive thing. It's more eyes in the area, um, which I think is the initial reason for the cameras being implemented in the first place. Uh, but that's a positive thing. Um, as we look at crime trend, crime trends and data, uh, it is best practice for myself and my leadership team to determine how we best allocate resources to be most effective. So whether that's patrol officers or, or other types of resources that we have within the police department, it's incumbent on leadership in the PD to be able to say, are we using our resources to the best of their capabilities? You know, is, is the resource that we're paying for, are we getting the best, um, results from it? So we always have to do that analysis. So looking at the trend of, of the rebuild process, understanding that this is, we're requesting a two-year agreement, we feel at some point in the future, in the near future, we're gonna be at a position where maybe they may not be as, quite as effective as we would hope them to be because there is more natural surveillance. And maybe there are areas within the community that they could be a little bit more, um, a better resource for us um, and a little bit more, uh, I guess, I guess alleviating some of our, our capacity issues. So being, being additional eyes, being additional monitoring of some certain areas. So we're looking at that, we're assessing all that data and the, the bottom line of the question, it remains like, what do we do next? Is, is it council's intention to kind of keep it as it was originally focused? Is this looking to maybe allow operational decision-making at the police department to use data and other supporting information to say, hey, can these be more effective in a different area? And I think that's, that's kind of what I'm gonna go over in the next couple of slides. Um, so again, we wanna, we wanna make sure that we're using it most effectively to deploy the resources and enhance our operational awareness. Um, we wanna use a, just a strategic deployment strategy, uh, based on data and trends to maximize eff, eff, effectiveness. Um, we do understand the critical needs to protect privacy and our policies address access to the system. And again, no different than any other criminal justice system that we have available to us. Prior to my arrival here in Lewisville, Deputy Chief Fisher made a presentation to council in which he requested an expansion of the current program. Um, we're not looking to expand in terms of the number of cameras. We have twenty cameras that are, that are implemented. Um, looking at, at what we have as a resource, we're not asking to increase the number of cameras. What we're looking to potentially do is, is use crime data, use crime trends to say, are these in the best place that they can be? And if not, what is the next step? Because again, we wanna be good stewards of the city's money. We wanna make sure that we're spending it in the most effective manner possible. The previous proposal does have merit, it covers high-volume roadways, uh, and it potentially alerts our officers when vehicles of interest enter our community. So as you can see on the diagram there, that was, that was a, a proposal back in the beginning of twenty-three, I believe, beginning of last year. Um, and it effectively moves, moves them from the western side of the community and it kind of places them along the outskirts of the city, um, along the perimeter. Um, again, on higher, higher volume roadways and areas that we could be alerted to people or vehicles coming into our community um, that we should be aware of. It also has merit because some of the areas of town that have, uh, slightly higher crime rates than others are also incorporated within some of the locations of those camera systems. So looking at it from, from the perspective of what was presented in the past, I do feel that it does have merit, but we're not locking ourselves into really any plan. What we wanna do is look to see if, if this is the best strategy to use because of the crime data and the incidents that are happening or is, does it look like something else? So this is just a comparison of where we have our resources currently. On the left is our current deployment, again centered on the, or just focused on the western part of the city. The one on the right would be a, a potential future deployment. So, um, I'm just kind of presenting that to you as a means to give a visual of, of maybe what could occur. Um, I, I keep using potential, I keep using the word maybe. Like, we don't have any solid plans in place. We don't have a timeline on when we would move, if we were to move these, these resources. Um, we're just looking to say, is there a way that we can have that decision-making capability of, of deploying them where we feel they're, they're best served? Um, I do wanna thank you for your time and consideration of this request. Uh, we do recommend a renewal of the service agreement with Flock for LPR Services for a new two-year term. And both Scott and I are available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Chief. Um, first we'll take questions from council members on the presentation. Council members have questions? Yes, uh, councilman.
I have one question, I'm not sure which of you will, or you can probably both answer. In the case of a car that's stolen or a vehicle that's stolen in Lewisville, can you access the Flock cameras from other communities to see if it's entered somewhere else and you can locate that stolen vehicle?
So we do have that capability. We have shared access with our communities that are around us, including every city, municipality, county that, um, sur, that touches our, our area. So we can follow that car out of our city, um, i- if we have the opportunity to do that, if those camera, if it passes through a camera.
Okay, and if we don't have a Flock system, we can't do that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Heffner.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Sort of the opposite of the previous question. Who, who potentially has access to data from the cameras in our community?
There are, um, only authorized users that are law enforcement that are also approved through CJS, which is the, the, um, certification for that, for that data. So only law enforcement accesses that data.
So let me just do a couple of examples, like a police department in Texas that's certified.
They, we have no partnerships outside of Colorado, Texas cannot access that system.
Even, even through Flock, Flock doesn't make it available?
Flock can, Flock can do certain things, they can access through Flock in certain ways, but they cannot access our data. There, there's a difference between doing that search and searching our system. So if there was a plate that they knew of that came from Texas, that came into Colorado, they could pick up that plate. But if they were searching our system for, if there was a car that wasn't a part of any of those notifications, they cannot get into all of the data that's, that accompanies the Flock system in Lewisville.
But they, they could access it through the hot list function, but not through the search function?
Yes, yes. So they can, well, no, they can access, access it through that search function. The difference is the data that they can look at. So if your vehicle per se went through one of those and is not associated with any hot list at all, they would never be able to find your, um, your data through that search. They could only find the data of the vehicle that they were searching for through that hot list.
But it, say, say for example, and just hypothetically, you know, some, somebody, some law enforcement agency in Texas that's certified knows the make, model, color, whatever, whatever they need to do to search, they, they can pick up that that vehicle passed through Lewisville? No?
Only if they have that vehicle on the hot list.
Okay. So the hot list, they, if they put the vehicle on the hot list function, they'll get an alert, but they can't run a search?
They can run the search for that. So if they have A B C one two three as a license plate and they search that in our system, they'll see if A B C one two three went through that.
Yeah.
But they cannot come in and say, I need to find a, all blue vehicles that were this, that passed through this time, whatever. They can't gain that information.
Got it. So they have to have the specific plate number? And that would be, sorry, just a couple more, federal law enforcement as well, FBI presumably?
Same thing. So if they, if there's a hot list that they can search, a specific information, they'll be able to do that through. Um, and they will access all seven, they can access all seventy-four agencies in the state of Colorado with doing that. But they cannot search for a, a blue car that was this, that passed through an intersection at this time.
Got it.
Councilmember Heffner, just, just, and just to add a point to that. Um, so anytime a vehicle of interest sparks an investigation, so if it's out of state or in-state, through both the CCIC, Colorado, as well as NCIC, you can run a query of that license plate to see if it has been stopped, if it has been, you know, contacted by law enforcement. That return will come back to say, on this date and time, this law enforcement agency made that contact. So it's, it's similar to that in terms of the hot list. So if they do a query through CCIC or NCIC, they can get that information to potentially locate a vehicle that might have left their jurisdiction or gone out of state. Um, so that's, that's, that's available through the criminal justice system. Um, and I think your question is, if they run a specific search of that plate, they should get a notification that, yes, that vehicle was in Lewisville or that vehicle was in Broomefield, but they're not getting the, the actual hit. They're just getting a notification that, yep, that vehicle with that specific plate was at this location on this date and time through Flock.
Yeah.
Correct?
So, so what I'm, what I'm driving at, the, the sort of bigger question is, uh, look, I trust the Lewisville PD entirely and, and the two of you entirely. I don't necessarily trust every police department that has the appropriate certification and, and a license agreement with Flock. You, you know, and there's a lot of academic work and press articles that this kind of thing has been abused. Um, you know, tracking your ex-wife or tracking somebody you don't like or, or what have you. Um, whi, which is leading to my question, which is, you know, to what extent did we sort of negotiate the terms of this agreement and to what extent is this just the stock, um, a, agreement that Flock hands out?
Yeah, so the negotiation was, was based on their, their current most up-to-date model of the, of the agreement that they're distributing across the board. We also made a si, a similar agreement two years ago in twenty twenty-two. Um, so the service agreement was run through the city attorney's office for accuracy and it was also vetted there. Um, we looked at it, it does meet the industry best standards and best practices. Like Scott mentioned, some agencies can, can go above that thirty day if they so choose. We've decided to adhere to that standard of thirty days. Um, and so again, it's, and I don't disagree with you. That information can be abused, it can be accessed, you know, incorrectly, improperly. That is a, that is an absolute, you know, risk. Um, it doesn't exist just simply with Flock, but it also exists within the crime information systems as well. So it's, it's a matter of how do we manage that? The audits that are conducted regularly, I feel are, are good checks and balances for us. We have the ability to vet ag, any agency requests saying, hey, we want your data. We have to make sure that that agency, number one, is doing it for a lawful reason, that we can justify and articulate that we wanna give this information out, that we even wanna give them access to our, our system. And so those are, those are evaluated every single time that they come in. So we're not blanketly just opening up our doors to So we're not blanketly just opening up our doors to, to any agency. Again, understanding privacy concerns and things of that nature. And on the spectrum, I think this is one of the lower level in terms of intrusiveness technologies that are available, like facial recognition technology, you know, some of the live monitor technologies that agencies are going to. This is nothing like that. This is simply a photograph of a vehicle. It alerts us that, hey, this license plate is associated with this public safety interest item, and we can take action or not take action. As far as the data goes, we have the ability to restrict or, or allow or not allow people or agencies to access that information. So in the, in the grand scheme, if we don't approve this, our cameras go away. That same agency in Texas can still get the hit on Broomfield, Boulder, CU, Lafayette. So the technology is in our area. And so it's, it's one of the, you know, it's one of the balancing things that we have to say. What is individual privacy versus public safety? That's always a debate. Like, how much do you want to sacrifice in that privacy for, for some degree of, of security or safety? So it is, and again, I think that's why we wanted to make sure this was not just a consent agenda item, that we had this opportunity for discussion.
That's really helpful. I'll go ahead.
Add one more thing to that as well. When I do my audits, there's a function for internal audit and also network audit. And I can see all who access our system for any reason outside of Colorado or within Colorado as well.
Great. And just one final question, which is, is a two-year extension the only option or do we have a one-year? Is there a possibility for one year?
Yeah, I think we can negotiate whatever the agreement. If we want the terms to be a year, they, they recommend a five-year, but we, we didn't want to go that route. We felt a two-year was the same thing that we did previously. We can certainly go to Flock and ask them, and I don't see that they would have an issue with that.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions from council? I, I have a few questions. Can you, can you walk through once again, because I, I'm not sure I entirely understand the hot list process? I mean, I, I understand NCIC and CCIC and how that, that works. I mean, it's going to, I, and I do understand that, that the data, some crime data is available. A car was stopped that somebody in another state is looking for, somebody who's in law enforcement in Texas, looking out for some person that they think has committed a crime according to Texas law. That if that car was stopped in Lewisville, even if we didn't have this, that information would be up on that system. So Flock is, is slightly different, but I want to understand how the data particularly is used or can be used by other jurisdictions. Because I, like councilmember Heffner, really have a high confidence in, in our local law enforcement. It's others that I have less confidence in, and particularly those of, you know, this large group of Flock users, which includes, at least as I see it in the agreement, not just law enforcement, but some private corporate folks who are trying to protect their property too. So what, tell me more about what the hot list, just walk through that, what that is and, yeah?
So there's, there's several different hot lists. So we get then the NCIC, which is the national crime, our information. We get the Colorado information from the Crime Center. We can get the Amber Alerts, the missing persons, and we also create our custom hot lists. That information is there. Those NCIC, the CCIC can be accessed at any time from law enforcement to gain information. As Chief explained, if, if there's a contact made with an individual in our city and for, and there's a, a reason to enter their information into that system, anyone in law enforcement outside of Lewisville can still access that system. We get that information. The way that this system works is when that picture is taken of that vehicle, that picture doesn't even tell us, I mean, it's, it's extremely limited data. It doesn't tell us anyone was in the car. We can kind of assume that by the way that it's positioned on the road. It also doesn't tell us if that car's moving or not, because this is a still picture. It is not a moving video. So we have very limited data. What we have in that is that license plate that just went through that was cross-referenced on those databases. And then within that cross-referencing, within 20 seconds of that, it will send information to our officers that that license plate crossed that camera and alert us to the information that is associated with that vehicle.
By that time, has the information that you have already, I mean, it's already alerted others?
No.
No?
So we would have to share our hot lists with other agencies in order for them to receive our hot list notifications. We have not shared any hot lists with any agencies, including the 74 others in Colorado, or 73 others in Colorado. So only the state, or only the city of Lewisville will receive custom hot lists from our city. Now, if that car was to pass through another city, then obviously we'd get the same notification we would, but nobody else is receiving our notifications.
Is that pretty typical of the other 74 jurisdictions? They do the same rules or do they have different rules?
The system works the same. They do have an ability to share hot lists though. So that is up to that agency. If they want to share a hot list, say Lafayette wanted to share with, with Lewisville, they would have the opportunity to do that.
So, so when, let's just, let me think about this for just a second. The, again, using the example, we're picking on Texas, but there, some would say there are good reasons always to be picking on Texas. But somebody wants to know, is on the Flock system, they don't know that whether a particular image is on our own hot list or not, I get that. When they, but they can't query the system to say, is this car on your system somewhere? Okay.
Now I'm confused. But they can, they have the license plate number?
Correct.
Okay.
So they would have to have that, they would have to have a law enforcement reason to access the system. So at that point, if, if they have a law enforcement reason along with that information of that license plate, then they can search all systems to see if that plate hits somewhere else besides their, their agency.
We'll, we'll have more of a discussion about this. And when, when the term is used felony, I mean, there are certain limitations in the contract on how it's to be used, but that's a felony as according to the jurisdiction that is trying to, or that is on the system, right? Some things are felonies in Texas that are not felonies here.
And, and there, there goes the human verification as well. So at that point, when the human verification is at that, they will then proceed with appropriate reaction. So even some of the attempt to locate are not things that we would attempt to locate or the warrants or things like that. So as the officer looks and researches that plate, they will determine what that plate is associated, what hot list they're associated with. They'll look at that information and they'll either proceed to, to address that situation or they'll, they'll proceed to do nothing at that point if that's appropriate.
Okay. Couple of other questions and then we can get to some public comment, because I suspect there may be some public comments. Go back for just a second to that, that, the website, the transparency website. I just want to understand what exactly is available to the public? I, I understand things like what our policies and procedures are and all that kind of stuff. But I guess I'm interested in what other information is available to them.
So pretty much the information I gave you tonight is what's on the, the transparency portal. It will list the, the things it cannot do, the things that it does do. It'll list the parameters in which we, we use it, and it will give you up-to-date information on real-time information on how many cars and how many hot list hits we've had within that 30-day period.
Doesn't allow them to?
Absolutely not.
Got it.
All right. Yes, Councilmember McKernan?
Thank you. Two points of clarification and a comment. Thank you. Good presentation. Thank you for, like, already addressing some of the resident concerns. So two points of clarification. One, businesses, non-police that have and are part of the Flock system would not be allowed to have access for searching. It's just their information is provided and available to police officers.
So, yes, you're correct. The ones that aren't associated with agencies do not have the same type of access or information. I do work closely with several different entities within the, in the city of Lewisville that have these, and they don't even get the, the CCIC or the NCIC hits. They cannot receive those because that is law enforcement-specific information.
So for them, they just can use it for their own internal purposes, but they couldn't access anything outside of their own?
That is true. The, the difference is though, that their cameras will then alert us of those NCIC and CCIC, because they've shared that information. So it doesn't share it with them, but it does share it with law enforcement.
So to build on what Mayor Lay and Councilmember Heffner were saying, if a law enforcement out in a different jurisdiction, regardless of where that is, in Colorado or outside, they can access, like a Vista's Flock information if they have a legitimate reason and that Flock information is part of the system?
So I just want to be clear that they can't access all the information. They can only access if there was a plate that they're specifically looking for if it went through that camera.
Sorry, I should have been more specific.
And, and I, I actually, I'd have to get a point of clarification on that as well. I do not believe they can access private communities' Flock cameras. They would have to, those communities would have to share it with law enforcement to access that. That is my understanding.
Okay, so it works different than like a hot list? Like, you know, you're looking for somebody within the community, you contact a Vista and say, hey, can we see if, like, I think you gave an example of a car that was related to a missing person incident, but could that have happened with an agency to their point outside of the local area?
They wouldn't have received the notifications that we receive, no.
Okay. And then lastly, outs, the surrounding communities that's, that literally are right up to the city of Lewisville city limits, so we'll use Lafayette for an example, they share South Boulder Road with us. You were showing, potentially putting cameras at that point, like potentially down the road if you see it's necessary. Are these already places where other communities like Lafayette have Flock cameras that they're using to monitor what's coming and going from their community?
So the, the most important information for us to receive is on the ingress, not the egress to the city. So if somebody comes into this city that would be a customer, be associated with one of these hot lists, we need to receive that information as they enter, not necessarily as they exit. There, there are not cameras. There is actually one camera actually through the city that's, that's neighboring, that does, is close to one of our boundaries, and it does point towards our city. Other than that, there is no information we'll be receiving from any of those other cameras on the ingress into our city.
Yeah, and on those, the cameras have limited capability. They can only scan like two, two to four lanes of traffic. So you have to determine, like, if you're going to put multiple cameras at an intersection, like for Lafayette or for us, is it better to capture the vehicle coming into the community or as it leaves? Once it leaves, it's already, we're, we're not going to do anything about it because it's in another jurisdiction. So most communities are, are putting them in, in strategic locations to maximize and not have to add multiple cameras when it's really not necessary. But, but again, yes, the roadways, the major roadways that are around us, they are, they are, there are Flock cameras within those areas.
So if the concern was an agency outside of our own trying to find data, look for a license plate, I won't use the word data, looking specifically for a license plate, they wouldn't necessarily have to ask us and ask us, they could be asking Lafayette or Broomfield 100 feet away from Lewisville for that information?
Yeah, so they, if they, if they ran the plate and it says it was in Broomfield, they know to contact that agency. The other thing about it is too, like, this isn't the only way that we communicate. Like, a detective in another state, if they have either information that the, the person or vehicle may be in our area, they can send out like be-on-the-lookout bulletins. They can contact our detectives or our patrol division to say, hey, we have this information, we're looking for this vehicle. So we may have the license plate and one of our patrol officers might see that car of interest to that agency in Texas, then they have to make the decision, no different than with Flock. Am I going to contact that vehicle based on what I know, based on the information that I've been provided and what's in the best interest of that contact? So it, it's that constant assessment and it's just another channel of information, really is all it is. So we have networks, we have communication ability with, with the entire country, federal partners, state partners, regional partners. So that network is pretty extensive. Flock is really just another channel that automates that be-on-the-lookout, I guess, actions that we take.
Councilmember Frey.
I have one more question. On the contact from other states, do we, is, or is it just up to us to decide if we're going to announce that there's a vehicle with this license plate that committed a crime in Texas or wherever, that is not a crime in Colorado? Do we report that the car is in Colorado?
We would not add vehicles, license plates to the, to the NCIC or the CCIC if they were never part of a criminal act or a missing person. So that would not hit, that would not be a hot list that would go out to Texas or to other states.
No, I mean, if the, if the car committed, or the driver, whatever, of the vehicle committed a crime in Texas?
Understood.
And then the car comes to Lewisville, do we have to tell Texas it's here?
No, we're not required to, to share any information with any agency. They can contact us. And if it's, if we're working a sensitive investigation that we don't feel they have the, the need to know or the right to know, like that information is privileged and we can secure it to the best of our abilities. So we're not, under no obligation, number one, to take any action on an alert that we get, nor number two, to provide information that we don't feel is appropriate to that asking agency. So again, we look at it case by case, but we vet everything. We're constantly assessing it. You know, our detective sergeant is in the back of the room and, and he's, you know, he can, I don't know if he wants to talk more about how that, that would work, but we receive inter-agency requests a lot for information and things like that. It really is up to us to determine what to disseminate and then how.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, let's, let's take some public comment. Thank you very much. These issues are hard ones for, for us and the public to, to get our, get our heads around, partly because we're not dealing with this on a day-to-day basis and everybody has their own tolerance for surveillance and whatever, of whatever kind. And so it's good to, to try to wrestle with these things and I appreciate your answering our questions. So let's, do we have any folks who want to?
I have one. Speaker Ernie Vilani? Vilani. Thank you.
Thank you. Ernie Vilani, Calado near Circle, Lewisville. Lived here for 15 years and picked a real good night to pay attention to what's going on in town, because I had no idea that this even existed. And I want to say for the record, nobody should ever want to deny law enforcement all of the tools and systems and support and finance that they need to keep us safe. And I don't think that anybody at this company, they have a long, good corporate history. There's nothing to suggest that it's not a well-run organization and the California Highway Patrol, as well as Gavin Newsom, support the use of this tool in Oakland. But it does definitely raise an awareness issue. And I think the questions that you asked tonight, while they were relevant, they really were not the focus on where the concern should be. Lots of it centered on other states and other law enforcement agencies that could create controversy if information was not shared properly. But I do want to just read, and I have only been here since six o'clock, and a simple Wikipedia search has suggested that their efficacy and effects on privacy and other civil liberties are the subject of extensive public scrutiny and debate. And so this is a $3.5 billion company, and I really appreciate this gentleman's expertise, and I don't doubt that anybody could dispute the value of ALPR or other surveillance-based systems that are designed to keep us safe. But their efficacy and the concerns around efficacy really do come down to that skepticism does remain among academics and some law enforcement. does remain among academics and some law enforcement officials regarding the actual efficacy of Flock's technology in reducing overall crime rates, suggesting a need for more transparent and comprehensive analysis. And the controversies just within the Wikipedia page suggest there are really serious civil liberties. The ALCU released a report in March of 2022. And as recently as 2023, University of Michigan summarized their report by saying, I'll get to the bottom of it, "ALPR technology have led to wrongful arrests and privacy invasions, raising significant concerns about technology, reliability, and the potential for misuse. There are all kinds of conversations about how misread license plates lead to disastrous real-world consequences, including violent arrests of innocent people. And ALPR errors arise not only from shortcomings internal to their technology, but from the hot lists they depend on for matches." That was a center of this. And so all I'm saying is I don't think that anybody could ask enough questions in a half an hour about increasing the surveillance of our community and what defines these things. It requires a far more robust debate, and I think we should table it. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment? Okay, then let's come down and, come down, let's talk amongst ourselves. What I want to do is, as before, or as we have done in the past, give everybody a chance to say something if they want to, and then we can talk further. But I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak. And try to keep an eye on Mayor Pro Tem because he's still out there too. First, I guess, I want to frame part of this as saying that we did have a very robust discussion about this in 2022. Some of the same kinds of concerns that we're discussing tonight came up then. It was new technology then. It also was new that we were getting, we were getting reports of thefts that were pretty substantial. And I think the, there's no question in my mind that, that the Flock camera has been very useful in solving some pretty significant crimes, not just in Louisville, but elsewhere, but especially Louisville. That's what we care especially about, although, you know, the crime that occurs in neighboring communities is important to us as well. I think we did a pretty good job in 2022 trying to put some barriers or some guardrails around the program. Whether that's something we want to extend, I think we can, we can talk about tonight. But we're really, we're kind of looking for an up-down or if there's, one of the things that I want to call attention to, and I didn't really understand this a couple of years ago, I'm not sure I understand it right now, but one of the parts of the resolution says the mayor and the city clerk are hereby authorized to execute the agreement, and the mayor is hereby further authorized to negotiate and approve such revisions to the agreement as the mayor determines are necessary or desirable for the protection of the city so long as the essential terms and conditions of the agreement are not altered. You know, that, I, I don't know exactly what that means, but I think our interim deputy city manager.
That is generally standard language that we use, as long as there's no substantive changes, the mayor can make modifications if there's errors or something that needs to be changed that's not substantive to the content of the contract. So that's, we use that with most contracts when we sign them.
I just, I want to make sure I'm not expected to be policing this contract in addition to other, other duties. We need to sort of get it as right as we can. But this is really an up or down, I think, isn't it, pretty much? If we, if we want to make changes to it, then we're going to end up having to negotiate with the company, but is that right?
So yes, Mayor, to clarify, we are asking you to approve, re-approve the contract for an two-year extension. And then the chief is also asking if council is willing to let the PD department have some flexibility over where they deploy these cameras in the future.
Yeah, no, and I, I appreciate that. I, I think, I think that the request is pretty clear, but I just want to make sure we remind ourselves as we go into the debate. So, Councilmember Hefner.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation and, and Q and A. You know, I think when we discussed this in 22, as I recall at least, we really wanted to target the fire neighborhoods. And, and the idea here was that this technology, I think, made some of us at least uncomfortable. But given the unique circumstances of the fire, it, it made a lot of sense with the material thefts and, and so on that were occurring. I, I continue to believe that's the case until the rebuild is, is basically done, I mean, all, all the way done. And so on question one, should we continue the contract? I, I tend to lean in favor, given the unique circumstance. On question two is where I am much less comfortable and am probably a no vote. And, you know, one of the things that, that's happened since 2022 is the University of Michigan paper that our public commenter mentioned. And I just want to read a section of it that, that makes me especially uncomfortable. A 2016 Associated Press report discovered hundreds of cases of officers all over the country who had misused the confidential databases associated with the, the Flock system, and this is a quote, "to get information on romantic partners, business associates, neighbors, journalists, and others for reasons that have nothing to do with daily police work. For example, they identified a case of a Colorado marshal who asked employees to run license plates checks on every white pickup truck he believed his girlfriend was having, as he believed his girlfriend was having an affair with a man who owned a white truck. More recently, in November 2022, Wichita Police revoked access to Flock license plates readers for the entire department after a lieutenant was arrested for using the technology to stalk his ex-wife." That, that gives me grave concern.
Is it, is it possible for the chief to kind of comment on that level of concern and how, how this concern is mitigated or handled, since it is, I, I mean, it's, it's a really valid thing that Councilmember Hefner brings up?
Well, I guess the question is, is he going to comment on our own department? I think he can talk about that, but how others might use these plates is a different, that's a different issue.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I mean, given the Q and A about the ability to run searches, basically law enforcement nationwide, I mean, that, that's the, that's the nature of it. It's, if, if this was a Louisville-specific program that didn't have data sharing and it was just Louisville PD, I, I don't, I think I would be fine putting them anywhere.
Would you be fine then if Louisville PD did this, but if they, I don't even know if they do, if they had the capability of not sharing license plate data that's found by Flock cameras within the city limits of Louisville?
Yeah, I mean, I think we have to be clear about what not sharing means, but if we were to block the ability to run searches, like no sharing whatsoever, that would give me greater comfort. I'm not sure if that's an option because I think that the sort of business model is that you're, you're buying into the network.
I mean, yeah, Chief, can you speak to that?
Yeah, as far as, I'd have to defer to Scott in, in terms of if we can restrict the, the ability to share. But certainly, I mean, you do raise good points. Obviously, this is a, we're all human, there are agencies out there with bad actors that misuse information all the time. You can pull up the same types of articles about people accessing the criminal justice system information. And so it is absolutely a concern, it's, we're aware of that. And I can't guarantee with certainty that it would never happen here, but I could tell you with certainty that it would be addressed, and it would be addressed to the fullest extent possible. You know, there, there are sanctions for misuse of criminal justice information system that can actually impact an entire agency. I think in the example you used with Wichita, like, the chief of police said, okay, this is a tool that's being misused and it's not used properly, so we are done with this. And I think that that's, that's what I alluded to in the, the presentation, that we're constantly assessing it, we're doing audits. If we find any misuse, any kind of, you know, abuse of the system, then that is something that administratively we're going to have to deal with. And so I think that's always a risk, and I, and I don't discount that because I, I would agree. I do have the same concerns and I would never want to see that occur here in Louisville. I don't want to see it occur anywhere within the profession, but it is a reality of accessing privileged information. So I, I can turn it over to Scott real quick if he wants to just touch on the ability to prevent the sharing with any specific agency.
Because that information is stored through the NCIC and the CCIC, I do not believe that we can block that information from being going to other agencies. I would, I would have to verify that. My concern that if it is being, is able to be blocked, then will we also be blocked as the city of Louisville from accessing other agencies because we're not sharing that information? And so therefore, it might render our system ineffective as well to gain that information.
Yeah, and I think as far as the, you're talking about a specific search of a license plate and another agency being able to say, okay, this plate hit in Louisville on this date and this time. I don't have that information right now. I can certainly follow up with the, with the company to get an absolute clear answer on that. As far as the NCIC and CCIC hits, those are going to appear in the system anyway because those are run through the, the crime information systems. And so those go national or they go, they go state. We don't have any control over, over what's in there or what's not. But potentially custom, custom hot lists and things like that, we can follow up and see if we're able to, to restrict that or what that might look like. I can't guarantee that it does because we haven't had that situation come about.
As far as custom hot lists, that information's not shared. We would have to share our custom hot list with an agency in order for them to have that information, and we don't do that.
And it's not, I mean, it seems to me it's, I don't know whether anybody's going to be all that interested in most of our hot lists, to be honest, but they are very interested presumably in certain license plates. That's the issue. If, and anybody can, can search that through the Flock database separate from the NCIC. I, yeah, I think, I, one question I had was, this contract ends at the end of this year? Is that correct?
The current service agreement expired September 24th. So we're in a grace period now because it was, they knew it was continued to tonight. So they said they would work with us to determine, you know, if, if it is approved, we'll figure what that looks like. If it's not approved, again, we'll figure out what this, essentially this extra several weeks would entail.
Okay, other comments from other councilmembers? Councilmember?
So we can vote tonight to continue the use of the Flock cameras. Can we also say when and where the cameras would be moved, if they're going to be moved out of the, the fire areas?
Council, I think if you want to vote tonight to continue Flock cameras for use in the fire areas, that's clear direction. If you would like more say in how we use them in the future, we might want to answer some of these questions and come back to you in another discussion.
Yeah, Councilmember?
Thank you. Thank you for the, the presentation, for all the work that you do in our community. It is greatly appreciated. And I will restate what my councilmembers have mentioned. I have the utmost respect and trust in your department as well. I would be in favor of a one-year contract to continue Flock services in the fire areas and assessing during that time leading up to the contract renewal in a year, do those residents in those areas feel that they need to continue beyond then? Or would they discontinue in their neighborhoods, depending on how built out they are? And then I also just don't know what the community wants as far as these sorts of crime prevention options go. So I would love to learn before we extend further out beyond the fire-impacted areas, does our community want that level of surveillance? And to be able to answer that question through great education that we had tonight, which is factually based and balanced, it's hard for me to extend beyond the fire areas without the community knowing what our community members want.
I think we've gotten everybody, so I'm, Caleb. Caleb doesn't have his hand up yet, but maybe.
I can, I can speak. Are you, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think generally speaking, I'm in support of Flock cameras in, in their current use. Again, it's, you know, technology that allows for, you know, alerting us of thing, you know, obviously we get those Amber alerts, like, oh, I guess I'll look out for a car like that. But technology that's looking at thousands of intersections across the state is a much better tool. And to be participating with the rest of the state to, to find cars that we're desperately trying to find, I think is important. And then investigating crimes after the fact with some of that data, I think is a really good use of it. So generally, I think it's fine to, some people's comments, Councilmember Hefner especially, but others as well, you know, the, the concerns of it, I mean, it's a tool and it's a tool that can be abused. You know, a hammer is a great way to build something and a hammer can be used as a weapon. Just because this technology has the ability to be abused, I don't think it means the technology itself is the problem. You know, those people abusing it are the problem. So I think there are, you know, reasonable constraints, and it sounds like a lot of those have been addressed generally. This is something that is being used across the country. So I think, I think it's, I, I'm, I'm okay with those, you know, slight risks as I see them. I don't really see it as invasion of privacy. You're, you're in a public space driving a vehicle and I don't quite see the privacy concerns. I do definitely hear, I think my biggest concern was that sense of, oh, you know, a license plate has been, you know, that story of someone being pulled over for the wrong reason, but that again is more issue of a plate was put into the system, you know, someone saw it and then acted on it. That again, is that a Flock camera issue or is that just generally a policing issue that, you know, we want to approach with caution, but not so much prejudice that we're, you know, approaching those moments, you know, assuming some sort of violent interaction? So, you know, I, again, nothing in here is going to be perfect, but generally, I'm in support of the Flock cameras. And I'm also in support of the police officers, you know, deciding the most effective place for them, right? I mean, egress and ingress out of our city, you know, where you can notice people coming and going, I think seems like the right place for those, those cameras instead of clustered in, in the fire areas where we have a lot of people living there now. It's different than it was two years ago. So anyways, those are my thoughts, but thanks for letting me chime in.
Thanks, Pro Tem. I guess I have a number of points to make. First of all, I think it's, it's pretty clear to me from all the 10 years I've been on council that we have a terrific police department. We're very fortunate to be able to say that. People in our community say they love the chief. I keep telling him, you know, that, that may wear off at some points. Wore off of me about two weeks into it, I think, when becoming mayor, but that, hopefully you'll have a little better experience with that. But you do do a great job and so do the, your officers and, and your staff are just terrific. And I, I think it's fair to say, none of the, none of the comments that we've made tonight or questions that we've asked have really anything to do with specific problems that are here and that we've seen. We're, we're trying to speculate a little bit, you know. I think the good news from my perspective is that we have I think the good news from my perspective is that we have seen the efficacy of this. Twenty, in 2022, you know, there was no track record and we do have that. So at least in crime solving in our own community and communities related to us, that is, they've been victimized by the same people, this has been a useful technology. And I, I think, I, I am concerned about potential abuses, but I don't know that focusing on the abuses is necessarily the way to make the decision here. I think, I think what Mayor Pro Tem said about the, the invasion of privacy is an important one. That is, that it's pretty minimally invasive. This is a photo of a car and a license plate at a particular time. It doesn't provide very much information. It's public. Anybody can do it? Yes, it's being done systematically. That is a difference, there's no question about that, but it's public information to, we all drive down the road and these are limited. We don't have that many of them. And I, I think I would be in favor of giving our police, who are highly professionalized and have to deal with limited dollars, so the, the ability to decide where to, to place these. That's what I would do. I am in favor of a one-year contract and, because I would like to see what happens in the next year and whether some of the concerns that have been quietly raised without maybe the elephant in the room being stated are, you know, we have to see how things happen because the, the saddest piece of this is the politicization of policing, even, you know, to a greater extent than I think ever. And that's my own comment. And I, I worry about that. I don't worry about it in our own town. I don't worry about it in most of policing. I just, I think it's something frankly that the, I, I think that the professionals in, in law enforcement really worry about it. If I were to ask you guys, I bet, you know, it just makes your job a lot harder when you have to wade through all of the other stuff to get to solving crimes, which is, and preventing them and building ties with the community. But I don't, I don't think I am as concerned about the lack of remedies. I think there are remedies, both within the department. I absolutely believe the chief when he says if we had, if we had abuses here, they would be dealt with very strongly. I think in many ways Colorado, you know, I know a little bit more about law enforcement because of prior job that I had and there's really stiff sanctions if people are detected doing the kinds of things that I think Councilmember Hefner was referring to. And the, the one that was described, person was caught mostly because it's so outlandish probably, but that's a good thing. And I, I don't think it's the rule. I think it's the strong exception. I, I know that people have great concern about solving and preventing crime in the city. I think this is a good tool to be able to, to do with it. We're going to get input. I'm not sure I want, I don't want neighborhoods themselves vetoing crime prevention. I mean, I think that's something, the input is important, the data is important. I don't want, you know, a single neighborhood to be able to say, we don't want a Flock camera here. I think that's, that gets to be a level of, and I don't know that that's what you were suggesting, Councilmember Hanleyton, it probably wasn't, but in terms of, we need to treat our city as all being affected by these Flock issues, even if the cameras aren't near a particular neighborhood. Anyway, so that's, those are the things that I guess I would generally before, I'm, I'm comfortable with the one-year. I'd prefer that we give the police department the flexibility to use the cameras, but I'm not sure that that's necessarily where the discussion is going. And so other, other comments? Yeah?
So I would have to say, I mean, like normally I, I lean on the side of privacy and I think in this particular case, it, it sounds like maybe the next year is planned to stay in and around the Marshall Fire rebuild areas. I mean, you're going to evaluate, but it's not like in the next four months, you plan to pull them all, right? Okay.
Yeah, we're going to do an evaluation. Like I said, we don't have a timeline. We don't have anything specifically set. We want to look to see, like, at what point do we feel as though maybe they would be more effective somewhere else? And it's not saying like, is this, as this gets approved tonight, like, we don't have plans in place to, to start, you know, the, the move anytime soon. It's going to be an evaluation. We're looking at data, crime trends, and we're going to make the best decision at the best time for when we feel like we can move them from those areas. Because we still recognize, like, there, there is still the potential for construction material theft. There are things going on, you know, after hours in these neighborhoods. And so we don't want to necessarily just pull that resource away. We want to make sure that we're doing it appropriately, but there is no set timeline at this point.
Okay. That, that's one of the things I, I would just wanted to clarify because, Mayor, you were mentioning, like, give them one year, but to use them other places. I think probably for the next 12 months, they're expected to stay in the Marshall Fire rebuild areas. And we have heard incidents that you brought up before, the where it isn't just material theft, it's theft within those neighborhoods. Criminals are able to hide their trucks along with like construction and, you know, vehicles and things like that. So it's just an easier environment for them to come and go in when there's all of that commotion versus a no-construction zone neighborhood, you know, with day-to-day sedans and, you know, pickups or minivans and stuff like that versus like tons of pickup trucks in all of the rebuild neighborhoods. I would actually, I know this is going to shock everybody sitting here. I would be in favor of a two-year, thank you for not proposing a five, a two-year plan. Keep them as you see fit in the neighborhoods, hopefully through the next year in the, the fire areas. And then use that following year as a, and maybe more than once a month evaluate who's trying to access our data, once we move, if you move those cameras outside the burn areas to areas of other crime where you're looking to prevent. I would be in favor of that in a full revaluation, bringing it to us and not, you know, maybe a month before that two-year thing expires, but maybe three or four months before, show us some of the information and reassure the whole community that the data, the, the license plate and vehicle information has not been misused, at least from what we can tell. So I would be in favor of doing that.
Let me kind of try to push the conversation toward consensus, I think. One, one variable that we're talking about is time, the length of time that we'd like the contract to be in place. I don't hear anybody saying we should stop. So it's a question of how long and under what terms. So I guess the first question would be whether it's going to be a one or two-year period. And then the second question would be whether we want to authorize the, the chief to go outside the fire area. I generally hear that the consensus is maybe not, at least not this next year if it's a one-year. I'm hearing consensus around, a little more consensus around one year than two, but why don't, let me take a quick straw vote here about with a thumbs down or a thumb up, two years or one? Start with two. Okay. Three votes for two. And of course, one year? Well, that's challenging now, isn't it? Where's Tim when we need him? Of course, a tie vote means, well, a tie vote doesn't mean anything because the contract's running out, so we'll have to make a.
Does 18 months do anything for anybody?
Yeah. Do we want to, I, let's, you know, the, we're going to know quite a bit more in the next year than we would, than we know now. I guess the question is, does this affect the price or the, it does? Do we have any idea what impact on price it has?
I don't have the specific numbers. The, the quote was 67,000 per year for a two-year deal. And typically in contracts, the longer you extend the term, the more discounts you get. So I'll have to work with the, the representative to see what that, what that price change might be. I would anticipate it's going to be a little bit higher than the 67,000.
One other, and I, how many for keeping the, the limitation that we have right now, which is the fire areas? How many people are in favor of keeping the fires as opposed to giving the chief and the police department more leeway to move them from fire areas to other areas that they think are useful? Well, we're not, we're, we're just going to that one independently. We'll come back to the, the, I have another idea that I want to share, but would you rather either stay with the current footprint or, I don't know, camera print? Or would you prefer to give a little more discretion to the police department? Stay with the current? Yeah? Ah, okay, give discretion? Okay. Yeah, please.
I'm happy to give discretion if the community says that they want these cameras outside of the originally intended use. So I'm saying, keep it right now for one year, but if they come back and say, we overwhelmingly hear from the community that they want to use this technology, I would be on board with that.
And my, my response to that is, we are the community. For better or worse.
We also heard from someone tonight who said they had like no clue this was going on. So I'm not certain beyond the burn areas, the community's aware that this technology could be expanded to other neighborhoods.
It, that, that may well be. I, I just mean, it's a point in time decision that we have to make. It's, I'm not being flip, I just mean, we've got to make a decision. But what you, if I'm hearing you correctly, it's, if we made it a year, then we could do a little bit more discussion amongst the people in the community and, and get a little bit more public support if that's what we wanted to do. And we can't, we're not taking any more public comment. We're, we're not, he's part of the presentation. Yeah. And we don't interrupt in the middle of the discussion. I appreciate you're new, but that's the rule. Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Fay.
I was going to suggest we could do for the first year, keep it in the fire areas, but do a lot of public outreach in that year and also some evaluation of how effective it is here and in other areas so that at the end of one year, we'll know whether we want to go with stopping it, with going two years, five years, whatever.
I kind of like that. That would be, that's the one-year, keep it limited, but do, I mean, the, doing the, the public piece is something that staff could be, we could direct staff to, but one year with, with just the fire areas and contact with the public, how many are in support of that as a, yes?
Yeah, and I have a comment to go with that.
Go ahead.
Which is just, you know, look, I think you all know where I stand. I think the fire is our special case. If we're going to, if we're going to start engaging in, in basically mass surveillance of the town, I, I think we owe the public a, like, a pretty clear explanation, not a council meeting agenda. I think we owe them an announcement that we are going to be tracking everywhere you go in Louisville.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's what's being proposed, but I get what you're saying. Even expanding the program.
We will have the capability to track anywhere you go. And trust us, trust us and the other law enforcement agencies, we're not going to abuse it. That should be the message. Just, you need to trust us.
Yeah, I don't think there are that many cameras is the, is the issue, but I, I get, I get the point that you're making and I think there's some truth to it. Yeah.
I, I actually do have concern that the majority of Louisville public was or is not aware that Flock cameras are being used. I think if they're a deterrent, you know, why isn't it like, you know, the, like, the traffic cams or the red light cameras where you know that this is here? So it's meant as a deterrent too. Like, don't blow a red light because this is going to pick you up. Don't steal on this, you know, we're going to get your license plate as you're going through. I think that needs to be, if it is, I actually agree, I think the greater community should be aware of it. And I think the fact that residents don't know, we, we have an obligation to let them be informed and then make a decision. If they, if we get an overwhelming amount of concern that we don't continue the program if, you know, it's, we have support for this, because it is in other communities. I mean, you can drive out of Louisville and if you stay on South Boulder Road, your license plate is going to be detected in Lafayette and be part of the Flock system. That's the reality of how this works right now. And so it's just a question of, do, you know, would you have a concern with the, as a community, as residents, the license plate being detected as it's entering or exiting? I guess you were more concerned about the, the entering, but in the Louisville boundaries, but pretty much everywhere around us that's happening anyway. I think people just aren't aware of it. And this is a good opportunity to make sure that they know that, but yet I, I actually think we should get the buy-in at this point. I didn't, I was not really that aware that people didn't know that this was being used outside, in, in the burn community and would have the possibility of being used elsewhere.
I, I would disagree. I think everybody in the burn community knows that this is happening because it's, they're very, very involved in that process. But whether others, I mean, if we expanded it beyond that, whether others would be comfortable with that, I think it's a reasonable, it's, it's reasonable to say, we don't know. I mean, to your point, Councilmember Hanleyton, it's, you know, we have to make decisions up here, one way or another, but if we need more information, then that's worthwhile. We could also put up, we could put this decision off for five weeks. But if you want to make a decision now, we're still in a grace period and we're going to lose the grace period. So let's go back to, you know, if we're talking, we're still really primarily talking about two variables, one year or two years and stay the course with the current.
I'm fine changing my thumb to one year and in the burn area.
Okay. One year in the burn area? How many? Yeah? All right. So let us go to a motion. Do we have a?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
We do have the issue of not knowing what the price for a one-year term is. And I don't know if you want to address that in your motion by, you know, saying a one-year at the price that's in the agreement, if you want to give some flexibility to the mayor to negotiate the one-year term price, or if you want it to come back if the price is important for all of you to weigh in on?
What, what's your pleasure? I mean, we can't, this is not something that appears on their website in terms of what the cost is, some way of, no, okay. I mean, they sell to different cities. It would make sense that they work up a proposal just for us, but they haven't given us multiple, or, or have they? Have they given us like a two and a five-year? But not a one?
So, no, they, they gave us a two-year proposal. The only thing that we can reference is a previous agreement. As a general rule, their, their, a single camera is about $3,500 is typically, and so calculating that out, it could potentially be 70,000 if, but I think they gave us a slight discount because we were doing a multiple-year agreement. So they reduced the rate by $6,000 total. So I don't know, I, I can't obviously speak for them if that's going to be about what it is, but as a general rule, $3,500 is what a lot of jurisdictions are seeing as the, the average price for, per camera.
Yeah, I mean, I, there's, there's a thought of like, gee, we could do it not to exceed, but. but we're just going to be signaling our negotiating position. I don't think that's a really good idea. Yes, Councilmember Hamilton?
Would it work if it were put on a consent agenda item in the future? Is that a possibility? And then we all have visibility into what the contract is for one year and we can pull it from the consent agenda if we feel like we need to discuss the pricing further?
The question is, this grace period and what happens? It ends today?
No, we, we don't have a definitive end date. I think they were giving us some grace because they knew that the matter was continued. I feel like we have a, a good relationship with, with Flock. I can certainly take this to them and say, this is what, what path we're taking. And again, it's, it's prorated, so if we're paying for another month on a prorated cost, then I don't think they would object to that. So they didn't give us an end date, like a, a drop dead deadline. Like, we have, I think we have room to work with them. So if there are things that we need to, to approach them with and some, you know, adjustments to the contract, I think that's, number one, it's also listed in the contract, like it, we have to agree to it. So-
Yeah.
As their customer, I don't anticipate much, much pushback from their, their side.
Okay. So, somebody want to make a motion? Would you like to make a motion? Councilmember Hamilton?
What are we?
We've got a resolution.
Moving it to consent agenda?
Know what we're going to-
No, I don't want to make a motion. I don't understand someone else.
Okay, yeah, Councilmember Hefner.
Yeah, I, I would move that we approve a one-year extension of the Flock contract at such reasonable price as the police chief may negotiate. You know, I think with the expectation that it's going to be somewhere reasonably close to half of what a two-year contract costs. But I, I think in your sound discretion is what I would propose with the additional condition that the cameras stay where they are currently.
Any seconds?
I'll second.
Any discussion? I think the only friendly amendment is, I'd like to get this back to council for placement on a consent agenda, hopefully as quickly as we can.
If the motion is adopted, it would not come back to the consent agenda. Was that the intent of the motion?
Yeah, I, I was suggesting we let our capable chief of police get us a one-year deal.
And, well, are we, are we, I'm trying to get the posture correct.
So if the motion-
We have, we have a resolution in front of us right now.
Correct. And, and the motion, if it's adopted, would approve the resolution with the condition that the term of the agreement be revised to one year. And the price would be whatever the reasonable price the chief is able to negotiate, understanding that it would be in the neighborhood of half of the two-year price. So not a significantly different price.
All right, to the extent that that modifies anything that the movement-
Yeah.
Has said, I'd take it as-
I fully agree. Yeah.
Okay. And the second or, okay. So, does everybody know what we're voting on? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes. Thank you, all of you. All right, let's, it is 8:14. Let's take a break till 8:20.
Should we do it? Check for everyone?
Let's, we'll do it when we get back. Think, yeah.
We're just, we're holding for just a minute. I think we need to get going here up. Okay, we are back on question. We've got two items still to go. That is the discussion direction on the budget and a second reading of, actually, we've got three. The second is the quasi judicial ordinance relating to two of our boards. And then the third will take a short period of time, I think, which is the appointment of council members to serve on committees to review board and commission applications. Do we keep plowing through? Can we? Yeah, thumbs up, thumbs side. All right.
Let's be efficient.
Let's be efficient. Go ahead, Director.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start us off if I can. So I do want to just thank everyone again for all of their work during this budget process. Council, Finance Committee, our entire executive leadership team, our finance team, including our interim finance director who stepped in. This was a challenging process and everyone stepped up. And I'm very proud to say that we have closed the gap for the 25, 26 budget and have a six year CIP ready to present to council tonight. It's important to keep in mind, we have a high level of service here in Louisville and we really do impressive and aspirational work. And this budget includes a high level of service still. It's important to balance this level of service with our resources available. And as we know, in municipalities, we're often resource constrained and this year was no different. We are also in the same boat as many of our local cities here in Colorado. And in fact, the conference at ICMA last week reminded me that across the nation, many cities are facing these conversations. I want to highlight that we have found a way through this this year, as we said we would. We have all worked together and we have balanced these budgets. The future is still uncertain. There could be benefits that we see as we finish out our sales tax year. There could be developments that impact this. There could be economic changes and we'll address those as they come up. Should we have the lucky opportunity to address additional funding next year, we will happily bring those opportunities to council to amend the budget if they're available. I do want to remind council that throughout the next year, we will continue to evaluate fees, overhead, and levels of services to have those conversations that we identified throughout this process as we head into 26 and the 27, 28 budget. After the nine, three council meeting, the two finance committee meetings, you'll see a balanced budget tonight. And with that, I'd like to hand this over to Director Bailey.
Thank you, interim city manager, Fox. I will begin by walking us through this evening's agenda. We'll start with an introduction of our next steps. We'll highlight key considerations, council priorities, and funded priorities. We'll refresh our major revenue drivers, sales and property tax. We'll then turn to our general fund, revisiting one-time funding and EDI, then on to our other long-term fund forecasts, and then to our CIP program and updates or adjustments made since our September 24 Finance Committee meeting. I acknowledge this is a busy slide. We are here. This is our sixth meeting. It outlines all of the work and meetings held to date on our budget development. Initial information, department requests, and our preliminary CIP program was provided at our budget retreat in July. In August, we worked towards structurally balancing our city's operational budgets for 2025, and this was accomplished by our September 3 meeting. In September, we worked towards balancing our CIP program. And at September 24 Finance Committee meeting, we diligently reviewed the CIP plan and made some adjustments. I'll highlight those later in this presentation. Today's staff, today, staff is presenting a balanced budget for the next two years and a CIP program that fits within our long-term forecasts. Staff is proud to present our recommended budget for your consideration. I'd like to take a moment to echo City Manager Fox's sentiment and thank all of our department heads, many of whom are here this evening, and their staff for their tireless efforts. Our finance team, Mahyar Matsurbadi, financial analyst, Julie Glazer, senior accountant, and Diane Krieger, who helped us with our payroll projections. I'd like to thank City Manager Fox and Deputy Muth for their leadership in developing our budget. I'd also like to thank the entire Finance Committee for their work, commitment, and guidance on the budget. A special recognition for our Chair, Hefner, who put a lot of extra time and paid a lot of attention detail to our budget product this evening. I'd like to thank the mayor, city council, for your guidance, feedback, and priorities as we navigate this process. Revisiting our key considerations. You've seen this slide in nearly every budget presentation to date. Some bullets are now past tense. We're not alone. Other cities are going through something similar. Louisville has a high quality of life and high levels of service. The city has taken on truly impressive and aspirational work. We need to balance that with our available resources. The future is uncertain. We have navigated through this together. We have a balanced budget for your adoption. Staff utilized council's priorities and the resident survey in prioritizing budget requests and arriving at our balanced budget. Those priorities were economic prosperity, public safety, maintaining our core services, affordable housing, all through the lens of EDI and environmental sustainability. Using those priorities from the previous slide, our funded priorities are our decarbonization goals, including solar, maintaining our core services, the prioritization of maintenance of city assets, and affordable housing set aside. EDI efforts, we established an acquisition reserve for the open space fund and supported our city staff with markets and merits. Turning now to the first of our two major revenue drivers for our city, sales tax. For 2024, we project our growth at 6%. Here's 2024, the white line across the top are percent change year over year. So projecting 6%. This is roughly half driven by taxable sales growth and half driven by the recent sales tax measure 2C. When compared to our 2024 budget, we are not projected to hit that target. However, our forecasts have been adjusted to the latest sales tax data. For the next two years, 25 and 26, we are projecting 2.9% sales tax growth. Another major driver for city operations is property tax. We project moderate growth in a non-reassessment year at 2.2%. The bars aggregate sales tax revenue. The white line are our city mills. If you look to the right, we've actually broken apart our general fund property tax revenue from our debt service, rec center debt service revenue. That's green for operations and yellow for our rec service, rec center debt. You'll note that we are recommending to extend the temporary credit for the rec center debt another year and then to realign with debt service payments in 2026. I'm proud to say the general fund, as well as all of our city's funds, are structurally balanced for 2025. I'd like to briefly revisit our one-time approved funded projects for 2025 to 26. The slide is largely unchanged from September 3, except for the addition for an EDI set aside $50,000. EDI is perva-, oh, skipped one slide. EDI is prevalent throughout our organization. I'd like to turn back to City Manager Fox.
Thank you, Director. We heard on the nine, three council meeting, an interest in making sure that we continue our EDI efforts. And I do want to thank council. One of your priorities for 2025 is to make sure this is pervasive throughout the city. So we appreciate in a tight budget year, your continued support of this priority. How we've approached this and our recommendation tonight for council's consideration is to add $50,000 to the 2025 budget for use at the city managers', new city managers' discretion when they start. One of the things we also took away from that is we need to highlight some of the ways we are incorporating EDI throughout the organization. When you try to use EDI as a lens, it should be going into everything you're doing. And while we all still have work to do this, and it has to be an intentional effort that we continue doing here, when we started pulling together some of the places we're using, it became very impactful for me just to see all of this. So it's in our events, it's in our storytelling, it's in our accessibility, including sensory kits for the neurodivergent at some of our, to access some of our operations. We do engagement throughout and we try to make sure that we're reaching everyone in the city. So we do engagement efforts in different regions, in different languages, making sure that we're hearing voices. And this is how we get record engagement, like we did for the comprehensive plan. We focus on it in our internal policies and procedures, in our large council policies, in our trainings. In fact, we have EDI training coming up for boards and commissions and council. We do training internally on this. We focus on it in our support for our community and in other things like our senior center and our costume exchanges and our proclamations. We try to incorporate it in everything. And this is something that we'll keep working on and growing as an organization. And after hearing council's discussion, we wanted to make sure we highlighted some of this to you all. So you did see a number for EDI. One of the things that I'll tell you is when I looked at that number, I said, well, that's not, that's not fully accurate because we also do it in our trails. We also do it in our pavement and making sure we're paving across the city. Some of those things are hard to quantify and put a number to, right? But we're making sure that we're trying to incorporate that as a vision or lens we're looking at everything through. So I would say this is a moment if council has additional feedback or a different direction for how you'd like to incorporate EDI in the 2025 budget. We'd like to hear that tonight so we can make sure it's in your budget for adoption when we come back to you. This is our proposal that we add that $50,000 in at the discretion of the new manager. If I'm hearing none, I would assume we can continue.
I was thinking we would wait until we go through the rest of the presentation and then we can get back with you if we need.
Thank you, city manager. Thank you, Mayor. I'll continue along. Turning back to our general fund's long-term forecast. The left bars are your revenues, your right bars are your expenses. Blue bar is your fund balance at the end of the year. Orange line is the minimum reserve, 15% for the general fund. The dotted line is your target reserve at 25% of operating expenses. I'd like to highlight that our general fund is structurally balanced in 2025 and balanced in 2026. By policy, we run long-term forecasts on all of our major funds. I'll run through those now. My apologies. Our CIP plan, as proposed, is financially sound when run through the long-term financial model. You'll note that our fund balance projects relatively low and out years. However, the next slide, we'll look at the capital fund in a slightly different way. In this chart, we pushed 25% of our appropriations into a subsequent year, beginning with 2024, to better align with spending trends. As a result, our fund balances in out years look a little bit more robust. The open space fund, this is operating in capital budgets. Again, blue bar revenue, red bar expenses, the deeper red bar are our capital expenditures. And then this purple on top is the acquisition reserve set aside. You also notice we've got two fund balances in the open space fund. The green is the operation one, in adherence with our 15% minimum policy, as well as the purple acquisition reserve accumulating over time, topping about 2.2, 2.3 million in 2030. The parks fund does not contain capital projects, capital expenditures, as a refined list has been shifted to the capital, capital fund. We are balanced in 2025, but we recognize there's still some work to be done. Here's the latest recreation fund's long-term financial forecast, unchanged from September 19 to September 24 presentations. Structurally balanced, and you'll note that the fund balance is between the minimum target reserve, yet below the rec center renewal and reserve replacement target. An opener outstanding item from last week's Finance Committee meeting. Tonight's staff is seeking your direction on whether or not to include Zoom fitness programming in our CIP program funded by the recreation fund. Recently, staff has received renewed interest in extending Zoom fitness program at the recreation center. The cost upgrade for two studios is $80,000. Project form with all details has been attached within today's materials. A few metrics from department staff. This serves approximately 138 unique attendees. We're the only city in the region still offering. We offer 25 hybrid classes per week and equipment must be updated to continue. We'll be seeking your feedback at the end of this presentation. Our latest consolidated utility fund forecast, it's compliant with our financial policies. I'd also like to note that tonight's budget does not set future utility rates. Our next update on rates is scheduled for October 17 at our Finance Committee. That's virtual 4 to 6 p.m. And a timeline for 2025 rate setting is a presentation to city council in Q1 2025 and an effective date targeting May 1, 2025. Our golf fund is structurally balanced and adheres to reserve policies. Our last budget presentation to city council was on September 3 and focused largely on our operational budgets. In staff, staff, in September, staff compiled the recommended CIP program. This was reviewed and the fork, the focus of the Finance Committee at the September 24 meeting. I'd like to remind our council that this plan is ambitious and larger than our existing program. The CIP plan contains nearly 200 projects and in total about $144 million. We revisit our CIP program every year. CMO, department, and finance staff collaborated to create a viable 2025, 2020, 2030 CIP plan. The maintenance of existing city assets and decarbonization projects were prioritized. Grant funding was maximized to best lever city funds. Marshall fire impacted roads are incorporated into the ongoing pavement program. Refined parks capital requests have been incorporated into the capital projects fund. We also shifted vehicle replacements to the capital projects fund. In total and broken out by fund, the new CIP plan totals nearly $144 million. These projects, their expenses, and the timing our run-through are long-term financial models I presented earlier and are in compliance with city financial policies. Again, within the plan are nearly 200 projects. A few of them highlighted here, beginning with pavement maintenance at $32.3 million. This funding includes Marshall fire impacted roads and allows these roads to be brought up to our citywide pavement, paving standards. Continuing on, decarbonization facility, facilities at $11.2 million. South Street underpass, downtown vision plan, windy gap reservoir, water treatment plant decarb medians, affordable housing set aside, FIA APPIA pedestrian improvements, centennial tennis court renovations, a few golf projects, and an inline skating rink pickleball conversion project. At the September 24 Finance Committee meeting, staff presented the full CIP program and it was reviewed and recommended by the, by the committee. Since that meeting, the following adjustments have been made. FIA APPIA pedestrian safety was added back to 25 and 26. Park projects were refined, reducing by about $575,000. This is done by, the park horse was shifted to the unfunded list. Volleyball to pickleball conversion was shifted to the unfunded list. This is a 2027 project. We refined the multi-use fields at Cleo Mud Rock, master plan from $250,000 to $150,000. And we refined our cemetery long-term plan from $175,000 to $100,000. This funding was essentially shifted to the APPIA. Recreation funds, studio upgrades, I have this as a whole pending council decision. And there was a lot of discussion about our affordable housing set aside at that meeting. The $2 million has been maintained. I would like to thank you for your time this evening, your direction and your support for this biannual budget adoption or development and CIP program. A budget hearing is scheduled for the 15th of this month with adoption scheduled for Monday, November 4. Staff and department heads are here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ken, well, first, can you answer some questions, if we have any? Council members have questions? Yes, council member.
I have a question on the 600K that's in for EDI issues. Will that or can that be used for an EDI manager position?
Okay, that's a great question. At this point in time, that 600K does not represent funding for the EDI position in 2026, with the, or 2025, I'm sorry. With the exception that that 50K that we've included can be used for the position, should the manager have that recommendation. That money comes from things like funding for EDI programs, funding for training, how we implement this across the organization.
And I think I recall we were going to postpone hiring an EDI manager until we get our new city manager. Is that correct?
That is the current approach, unless we hear other direction.
Okay. And then on the, the Zoom classes for the rec center, I would, I would like to see that approved. And that could be part of the EDI funding because it does serve a lot of people who need special needs. Thank you.
Other questions? Yeah, Mayor Potam.
I wasn't able to stay for the entire Finance Committee meeting, which is fine because I'm not on the committee. I got to just get up and walk away. It was great. But the Cleo Mud Rock feasibility study for multi-use fields, we got knocked down from 250 to 150. Is the intention there to do like a full design that we then, as a council, decide, gosh, do we want to spend 300, 500, a million dollars changing that from baseball fields to, to multi-use fields? Or can we make the decision that we want to change baseball fields to multi-use fields and save $150,000 in feasibility of whether baseball fields can become soccer fields? Because I am confident in the feasibility. So I'm trying to understand what the, what the point of that 150K is. And I'm sure they're like, how, how that's going to be used and what order things happen in.
Excellent question, Mayor Potam. I'll pass this along to Director Blackmore.
Good question. So there were a number of projects in this proposed budget that anticipate what's going to come out of our upcoming master plan that we're going to be selecting a consultant for hopefully into this year. One of those things that we are aware of, based on existing community feedback and based on the 2012 master plan, is that we have a shortfall when it comes to outdoor recreation amenities for a whole host of, pick your pleasure, of which outdoor recreation amenity you prefer to play. And so this is a placeholder. That is a site, as we discussed at Finance Committee meeting, that isn't currently serving our programming demand. It's a dilapidated, you know, hard to maintain facility with the two fields that we have out there. So we anticipate that there's a better use for that, that better fits what's going to come out of the master plan. And that would basically be that we need a site and we're out of land to increase, for whatever reason that you want it to increase for, whether that be additional youth's fields, whether it be for soccer and multipurpose, whether it be for lacrosse, whatever it's going to be. And so this, what we removed to take it from 250 to 150 is some of that engineering. But this would, we don't anticipate the master plan getting us that level of detail. So this would be a higher level of detail to go into, public engagement, site planning, recommendations that we would then use for future budgeting and request. In lieu of, the flip side of that would be coming back as part of our CIP plan to upgrade the, the current facilities that we know we're going to need, whether it be fencing or new turfing or backstops or infield upgrades or whatever it's going to be for fields that we know aren't going to meet our, our programming demand as it's currently stands. So that's why it's in there.
I feel like I, I'm not sure I got my answer. I think, I appreciate the background there. I'm still trying to understand, like, the, the specific 150 is for that site though, right? Is it, you're saying that 150 is for a greater area or it's for that one site?
Yes, sir. It's, it's for that one site.
And is it for the feasibility of soccer fields there? Or is it like beginning in the, in the design of how they would be laid out and how to actually go about, will we be able to use what they do to start constructing fields?
Yes, that would be the intent, is that we end up with a, basically a master plan for that site that would give us future direction on how we're going to build out. And that will be in concert with the master plan that we're doing for the department. It's one site. But again, it's But again, it's an underutilized parcel of land and we don't have very many of those in our department at the moment for how we would convert in the future. So.
I, I think I'm satisfied. I think, I think what I'm hearing is it isn't just looking at that rectangle and deciding whether or not it could handle soccer fields. It's looking at that site and designing the way they would lay out, where fences would be, where structures would be, where fans would be, what blah, blah, blah. Like it, it would, it would lay out a plan.
Correct. And it would be in concert, taking the feedback from the master plan. So it's not going to be like shooting from the hip, starting over. It would be how we can utilize what we find in the master plan to use that site to address some of those needs.
Okay.
Other questions? Why don't we take some public comment then? Again, three minutes per person. Come and give the clerk a card indicating that you'd like to provide further comment. And you can speak for up to three minutes or six minutes if you pool your time. Don't have to speak that length of time if you don't want to. Do we have any public comment?
I do. Helen Moschek.
Louisville. Thank you, Rob. And I just wanted to start with, we're making progress. We found $50,000 for EDI. If we could find $63,000 more, we would be able to maintain that EDI manager position and continue this good work that's illustrated in that slide. $600,000 worth of work around the community. It's only a beginning. It's not coordinated. We don't have an expert, a leader, a person who's accountable in charge of it, and we need those things. It was recommended by the EDI Task Force. They started their work in 2021. They finished in November. In the report, the first three overarching recommendations at the governance and implementation level are create an EDI manager position with appropriate support, resources and decision-making power. Make the EDI Task Force a permanent city commission. Host regular feedback meetings with BIPOC and other marginalized communities to help assess EDI efforts. That's a lot of work to do. A little over a year later, in February 2023, the city hired the EDI manager. It's a great step forward. Now, 18 months later, the proposal is to eliminate the EDI manager to save $113,000 ongoing in a $30 million budget. In today's presentation, there's a proposal to add back a one-time $50,000 allocation for the discretion of the new city manager. Now, unless that city manager is a professional person who works and has lived life experience in EDI, I'm not sure one time of $50,000 is going to make a difference or if that person will have even beginning to have any time or ability to put any effort into this when they're brand new on the job. We need someone professional in this role. The 50 K doesn't save the EDI manager position. It isn't enough and it's only one-time funds. It's a Band-Aid on a harm that this country has experienced in its history. It's not going to work. The presentation also highlights initial efforts in departments across the city to develop programs and technology to increase access, provide education, and begin efforts to create an inclusive environment. This work is so important and this is substantial progress, but it is just the beginning. To quote the report, the submission of this report by the EDI Task Force that captures the lived experience of many people of color in Louisville does not represent the end of this work. Instead, it symbolizes the beginning of a much longer journey. The burden now lies on the Louisville City Government and its partner institutions to assess and activate the enclosed recommendations by allocating resources, changing policy, and building programs to create more inclusive and equitable outcomes in the Louisville community, end quote. We need to listen to and follow these recommendations. We need someone in charge, experienced and expert, and we need to create accountability across the city. Save this position, find the $63,000. Please give that direction to the city manager and finance director. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Okay, no, nobody else, huh? All right. Then let's bring it back to council. I'm going to, to our Finance Committee Chair to provide a little bit of framing for tonight. So.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll try and be brief. I'll start with thank yous to the Finance Committee, Councilmembers Kern and Hamilton for their extensive work over the past few months, as well as to Finance Director Bailey and interim City Manager Fox, as well as all the other city staff who contributed endless time and effort and collaboration to, to come up with what's before us on now our sixth public meeting on next year's budget or two-year budget, but really next year's budget. I am tremendously pleased with the progress we've made. There have been a lot of difficult decisions, a lot of weighing of interests and, and balancing of priorities. I think what, where we've landed not only incorporates a lot of feedback from the group of us, and I know many of you have attended the Finance Committee Meetings as well, but is also quite consistent with the citizen survey we did and some of the other sort of strategic visioning we've done around comprehensive plan and so on. I know, I know Director Bailey hit some highlights, but I, I'm going to hit some of them again and add some. Over $11 million for decarbonization, $2 million for affordable housing, over $600,000 for EDI initiatives. We have for the first time ever an acquisition reserve for open space. In addition to that, on open space, we have capital money for an open space master plan, a wildlife plan, a prairie restoration plan. We have $32 million for pavement program, $10 million for the South Street Underpass, money for the downtown vision plan implementation, millions of dollars for the future water needs of the city and water infrastructure, on, on top of numerous technology improvements, playgrounds, vehicles, trail signs, you name it. There is a lot in this budget. You know, and those are sort of the, the flashy items. I, I would be remiss not to, to mention the less flashy items, which is consistent both with the citizen survey and I think a lot of the discussions we've had, this budget prioritizes maintaining what we have. We're, we're trying to take good care of the things that the people of Louisville have spent money on. I, I think this will accomplish that. And last, but certainly not least, is everyone who works for the city today keeps their job, gets their bonus, gets their merit increase, business as usual as far as our, our wonderful staff goes, which, which cannot be overstated in terms of importance. That's who runs the city. It's not us. So I, I think there's an awful lot to like here. We're getting toward the end of the road on the budget. I'm, I hope, you know, I'm sure we'll have some tweaks and adjustment. But I also know that Director Bailey is going to need all of the days between now and October 15th to get this into final form.
Thank you. The only thing I would add to that is just my own thanks. I think for the public that isn't kind of been following this, this is, this is the first biennial budget, biannual budget, excuse me, that this team, and by, by that I mean the leadership, most of the leadership of the, well, let's, let's put it this way, folks in the city manager's office have ever had, as well as our budget director or our Finance Director. And, and frankly, it's the first that most of the council members have had, or that most council members have had. There's several of us that are veterans of a couple of these in the past. But it, it's a big, heavy, heavy, heavy lift. And there were a lot of items at the beginning. I think the, the demand for services and capital projects, I think as, as Manager Fox said, is really large. And I think at every stage, as we've kind of moved down the funnel from too much into something that's structurally balanced as a proposal, I'm really appreciative of all the work and all the work that, that the Finance Committee has done that was led by Councilmember Hefner, but Councilmember Hamilton and Councilmember Kern were part of that. And those, those meetings were incredibly active. In the past, they've, they haven't necessarily been as active always as, as that. And I think that's only to the good because that's where really good work can get done and can be brought here and we can focus on bigger picture and, and answer questions that need to be answered. So thank you to everyone for that process. And I think it was also very transparent. I would be, I, I would be remiss in not emphasizing that because that is something that in a lot of communities, it's not quite that way. And I think everybody has, has been very much out in the open and I do appreciate that too. And I think our citizens are appreciating it. So I think I would maybe proceed by exception. I, you know, if there are parts of the, the budget that are of concern, maybe we could try to focus on those. In particular, I think sort of the change, the iteration since the last meeting of the council would be a good thing. And even since the last Finance Committee, I, I am looking at, bear with me for just a second. If you, well, let's, can you go to the slide? I think it's 26 and just put that up there for a second. These were the changes, I think, that are, were made since the last meeting of the Finance Committee on September 24th. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about those in particular? Because, yeah.
I don't, pardon me, I don't have a concern. If I may make a comment though, I think, and, and since we've found out about it, I've been a big proponent of this, having the rec center classes available to people via Zoom, there is a concern over DEI and where to spend money or not. And this is one of the ways that I believe in this community, as was actually stated in the summary about Zoom classes, no other communities are doing this. Louisville does a lot of great things that a lot of other communities don't do. This provides access to people who otherwise are isolated for whatever reasons, medical or whatever their personal choices are, maybe it's life circumstances, what have you, and it keeps them connected and it keeps them healthy. So this not, is not just about a yoga class that somebody can't get to. This can be a lifeline for people. And I cannot emphasize enough that I am really proud of, of the community for bringing this to our attention. And we, as a council, saying yes to this, to the rec center for saying yes, finding the funds. This is how you actually put diversity, equity, inclusion into place. This is how you use it to impact people's daily lives. It's not just a theory, it's an application of a theory. And I'm, I'm pleased that this is here and I don't think anybody would object. I just wanted to, you know, talk about it and say how important that is. And I'm really pleased that we're able to do so much sustainability and decarbonization items. That's been an amazing add-in. And I'm, I'm also pleased actually with having the amount of money we do for affordable housing, whether it's for grant measures or what have you. I would hope that it is a capital A only because it is at a bulleted point and that this will be for inclusive for all kinds of fund, housing funding, not just capital A because I think we have a difficult time defining, because we haven't done a good definition of it yet, that this can be used for lots of different types of housing projects, not just a low or no income housing project.
Thank you, Councilmember Kern. Others?
May I?
Yeah, please.
I'll address your question here and then if you'll allow me, I'd like just to be really efficient and use my few minutes to state and then we can move on. My councilmember Hefner nicely summarized the work and victories and the challenges we faced throughout this process. So I will not repeat that, other than to say I agree and thank you for succinctly stating that. Support the Recreation Fund, the studio upgrades, that fund is healthy and can absorb that. So on board with that. Not to be discussed today, but I do think it is worth keeping in mind that we have some concerning trends with fund balances that we need to keep an eye on over time. And then the last point I'll make is regarding the EDI position and programs. Helen, thank you for continuing to bring this to the forefront of the discussion. I agree, this position is very, very important, so much so that I don't think we should rinse and repeat what we've done in the past. The work that the EDI Task Force did, the recommendations that they made are very, very important, that we apply those and carry that baton forward in a way that makes impact in our community. And I'm not convinced that rinsing and repeating what's happened in the past year, year and a half is the way to do that. So I see that $50,000 is our way of saying, we so much believe in this, that we set aside funds to do it right this next time around. So I'm supportive of that. And right, meaning that we hire the right person in the right position with long-term funding to sustain that, not just funding for one year. So I'm in support of where we're at right now and the addition of the Recreation Fund. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Fahy.
I would like to agree with everything that Counselor Hamilton just said. I'd also like to say that because EDI is one of our, our elements that are supposed to run through everything that the city does, just as sustainability does, I would like to see if we could get a, an EDI Advisory Board that runs monthly, just like the Sustainability Advisory Board and all of our other advisory boards, so that we can get community input from a variety of perspectives on how we can improve our EDI efforts in the city.
Thanks. Other comments? Mayor Potam.
Yeah, so I, I think probably won't have a huge effect on the proceedings tonight, but again, I'll just, I'll say, you know, we went through a long process with the Task Force, I'll say 21. And when they wrapped up, you know, they had recommendations. And then I continued to meet with a subset of that group for the next year informally. And we worked and pressed on then manager Durbin to hire. And we worked and pressed on then Manager Durbin to hire a EDI manager. And it took us, you know, over a year of constant, like, what's progress? What's the progress? Why isn't the job posted? Oh, we're going to post it soon. Should we post any day? Two weeks, it'll be posted in two weeks, it'll be posted in two weeks. And for about nine months, we were told it'd be posted in two weeks. And so eventually, we hired that person. They did not last very long. And if it was an important position, like anything else in our city, I think that person would have been rehired. A posting would have been put out immediately. And so, you know, when our Deputy City Manager steps into interim City Manager, if we think the Deputy City Manager position's important, we elevate someone to that position. If we, when Kayla left the Sustainability Director, we thought that was an important position, so we hired someone into that position. And so this is a position that, in my opinion, we don't think is important. Because, and I actually, this more goes on Durbin than on you, Manager Fox, but this was never an important position. And it wasn't hired well, it wasn't maintained well. And when they left, it wasn't rehired. And so the rinse and repeat for me is that's what we're in right now. We're actually in a, we don't care about this position and we are not going to hire someone. And that's the reality that we face right now. And so I think they are, like, maybe that the position itself is not important, but the Task Force said it was and worked for a year to get that person hired. The Task Force that we relied on as the experts told us we need a human in that position to carry that work forward. That's what they asked for. And so while we are doing great work, and I don't deny that there's great work happening all over the city, for it to be done well and for it to be done in the right directions and for it to be thought of all the time, you need a human championing that, I truly believe. It's not the job of this council, partly because of, like, who I am, a rich, white man in charge. I'm not the one to be leading the EDI effort. So a permanent task force, I think, is a great idea. But an EDI manager that can help push things forward, I think, is critical. So I would hope at least that the $50,000 is usable by our new City Manager to, if they see fit, use that one-time fund to hire for the second half of the year, an EDI manager with that, with that fund. And then we would be looking at potentially, you know, budget amendments for that to be a permanent position in the following years. But, you know, I, I, yeah. So if, if I had my druthers, I would, I would certainly fully fund this position immediately. But I don't think that's where this council's at. So you can say otherwise if you, if you would like to fund it fully, but at least want that $50,000 to be usable for a human.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. I guess I, I want to sort of agree and disagree about, about the EDI piece because we were, we were together in, in putting, I think, the initial effort kind of on the rails or at least helped to, to start some. We, we didn't start the, the, the momentum. I mean, the momentum was there in 2020 and we responded to it. And I think, I think what we did in that, in that, by letting, you know, creating a group that did great work continues to be kind of, I think, sets good, solid goals that we have. We've not, we've not achieved to the degree that, I mean, some of them we just haven't touched. Some of them we've done some work on and some of them are things that we are going to have to do over time. I think one of the things that, for, you know, folks who haven't followed this as closely, is there are budget amendments. There will be budget amendments next year. I, I, too, think that I would have wished for more than the amount of money that we have there. But I am heartened by the fact that we can amend the budget and put more money in for that. And I've talked with others on the dais in other areas, too. In part, when we get our tax numbers back, I think they'll be, hopefully, they'll be good news and we can, we can think about some of these options. I don't think it's right to say that the, that it's not important. I think that's the wrong, that is a message that you can, that you can reach. I, I think it's not an unreasonable thing. I think it's wrong because I think there are many things that the city is doing that is pushing out EDI into the fabric of our city government and outward-facing efforts. I think where we have fallen, we've fallen short in outward-facing efforts. But I don't think it's because it's unimportant. And I don't think necessarily that maintaining and funding it at the level it was means we solve the problem by having somebody there. I think the, the problem right now is we've got a new City Manager who's coming on board, which none of us could have really understood six months ago. We want this position to be, I, I want a position, but I want to make sure it's set up for success. I think all of us, all of us do. I think the other thing to know is, and I'll kind of end it here, but is that because of the good work that was done early on in the, in getting our recruiter for the City Manager position put together, that was, Mayor Protem and Councilmember Hamilton worked very hard on getting that RFP together. The person who has been selected is terrific. I think it is very clear that they are extraordinarily well-equipped to be sensitive to the concerns that we've raised and, and the positives, the negatives of this, of the efforts we've made so far. And we have made it pretty clear to them that we would like to have somebody who's keen on taking this forward in a, in a way that's stronger than our last full-time City Manager was. And I think that's going to happen. And that gives me some cause for optimism. So from that standpoint, I think there is, for, for those who are impatient, I'm, I'm glad people are impatient in the sense that I think it needs to, we need to keep the fire under council. And Mayor Protem and I have had a lot of discussions about this. And hopefully, we, you know, that's going to happen in the new year. But, you know, we're, we're about at the end of the, of the budget cycle and hopefully, or the, the budget-making cycle. And I hope that the restoration of the funding that we have will be a step in that right direction. Is it enough? No, but it's getting there.
As a direct question, do you support the $50,000 being used for a human if the manager sees fit?
I do. Yeah. Other comments, questions? Yes, Judy?
So the general fund seems to be the thing that is the tightest, the issue that we are having the hardest time. And it's the reason we didn't, weren't able to expand staffing things and, and other projects. One of the things I'm proud of the city for doing, I'm pleased that we're able to do, is fund some of the nonprofit organizations that have asked for assistance, assistance. And the, the list of organizations that came to us, because this was maybe the one not-so-big, large, item, sexy piece, but is a really critical piece to a lot of members of this community, is these not-for-profits reach out and, in effect, day-to-day life or in emergent times, residents of Louisville directly. And I really feel that we should be funding it to our maximum ability. That was short, about $16,800 of the requests that we had. And particularly the Sister Carmen Fund, which is helping people directly in Louisville with rent, with utilities, which we will be having some utility increases in 2025. And we converted a program that was specifically meant for low-income seniors. We have really rightly set that, so it affects all, it impacts all low-income residents who would need any assistance, whether that's utility, food, rent, mortgage, whatever. What I would like to see is if we do have the additional funds, as you mentioned, Mayor Lay, we're putting $50,000 aside for DEI. And when I hear everybody talk, it seems like what most people refer to diversity, equity, and inclusion is low income. And I think one of the most, like, equitable, if you will, things that we can do and inclusionary things is to make sure that these members can continue to live in our community. We keep saying Louisville's so expensive to live in. And if one of the things that we're going to do is take some of this general fund money, since it can't come from capital funds, we can't tap into any of these, this big spending projects, if we can make sure that any Louisville resident who goes, who needs help with something, I mean, if they're making $40,000, we've already established that as, as, as an amount. But if we're talking to somebody who has, you know, a family and they're trying to survive in Louisville and $60,000 a year, there, most people would tell you that that's a really difficult thing to do. Multiple incomes, children, it's hard. That we, that we would, as a council, revisit and be willing to put some of those general fund dollars, not just toward talking about helping people, but actually helping these residents. I'm, I, I would tell you that this is the only point with the budget that I would like to see funds shifted into. But as the mayor said, we have additional things moving forward. They, we can do additional amendments. And so I would just like to see that and acknowledge that there are some people who will still need help and I don't want them to go without it, not in the abundance of wealth in this community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kern. So I think, you know, with, I guess, some qualifications, you know, we need to give direction to staff as to whether we proceed as they've suggested and the recommendations they're, they're making or whether we provide different direction. And I certainly hear, some of us have talked about, you know, different directions, but I, I'm not sure. I hear a consensus around, I mean, I hear a general consensus around what the staff has proposed with, with exceptions. Am I reading that correctly or?
Yes.
Okay. I think we have direction. And I think what I would say is for a number of the areas we've talked about, we ought to think early in 2025 about where we want, consistent with the training we're going to have coming up on EDI, consistent with the work plan that we are starting to congeal, that we consider whether tweaks in our budget through budget amendments may be worthwhile. But I think for now, we're, it's been a very, very spirited budget process. I think that's very clear. And I actually am thankful for that. If you're just coming and rubber-stamping everything, that's not a good thing. And I think we've had a lot of people who've really been working this really hard. It's not perfect. It, I hope, sends the right signals or at least does not send the wrong signals. And I really appreciate everybody's work. So I think unless you, City Manager Fox, think that you need more direction, I think you've got it. All right. Let us move on then to ordinance number 1882, Series 2024, an ordinance amending Louisville municipal code chapters 2.20 and 4.02 concerning quasi-judicial roles of the Open Space Advisory Board and the Parks and Public Landscaping Advisory Board, second reading, public hearing advertised in the Daily Camera on September 8th, 2024. I'm opening the public hearing. And do we have a staff presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Councils. This is Rob Zuccaro, Community Development Director for the city, making the staff presentation on this. This ordinance is being processed in order to try to clarify and hopefully create a better process if we're going to have our Open Space Advisory Board and our Parks Advisory Boards be reviewing land use cases. The intent of the ordinance is to make sure that it's clear what types of land use cases they're reviewing, what parts of those land use cases they're weighing in on and what criteria that they're going to be using. The, the current process that we have in our code includes some direction for the Open Space Advisory Board. They do have a current role within our ordinances, which basically says if there's open space adjacent to or if the development is adjacent to open space or materially impacting open space, they should review it, but not what criteria. It's part of the review process. It doesn't really say how that should be done. So we've done our best over the years to comply with that ordinance. The Parks and Public Landscaping Advisory Board, we've incorporated into that process because they seem to have similar role, but overseeing different parts of that city infrastructure. So we've included them, but there's nothing in our ordinances on how to do that. So this tries to clarify that role for both OSAB and PPLAB. Again, the types of applications, the scope of review, the criteria for review. What we're proposing is they also have a formal, formal public hearing. They would be advising you on land use cases. It would impact property rights. So it's really important that we have a formal hearing with criteria and that we have due process such as public hearings and public notice. So that's the proposal, is to include the same types of public notice the Planning Commission or City Council would have for PPLAB. Basically, any type of plat or general development plan where there's a public land dedication, those are, those are the types of applications where those types of things get set. It's often parks and open space, doesn't always have to be. PPLAB would be reviewing those. Any other application that would propose public parks and public street scape, landscaping, PPLAB would review those. So whether it's a plat or a PUD, sometimes PUDs are proposing parks, even though it's not part of your formal public land dedication, or there's public street landscaping, they may review those as well. For OSAB, again, plats and GDPs where there's public land dedications. And then there's a couple of other provisions. Within our PUD code, there's two different provisions where the city could require additional open space. That's, that's Section 172880. So that's, there's some criteria already in the code. So if, if that could be something that gets referred to them. And then when there's a waiver request, our waiver criteria currently states that public open space dedications in excess of the minimums can be considered in waiver requests. So if those are being proposed, then we're proposing that OSAB would review those. And then trail and trail connections, they would be reviewing as well. We also have some language in there, still mimicking about if there's, if there's development materially impacting open space, the city can refer it up. It doesn't automatically. It doesn't automatically go to OSAB, but on a case-by-case basis, it could. So both OSAB and PPLAB did review drafts. All of their comments are incorporated into that, that materially impacting open space language, which is something that OSAB wanted in, so we've reincorporated that back into the draft. So again, if, from an analysis standpoint, if council does desire that this be a formal review process, the, the city staff is recommending that we do pass an ordinance such as this so that we do have a clear process, clear criteria, and expectations for each of the boards. We do want to note that we do anticipate it would add additional process requirements. It could add time to the development review process. You know, if they are having their own public hearings, that takes time. They could also ask for additional information, continue their hearings. It could add a month, in some rare cases, maybe more than a month to the review process. So we wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that as well. Again, both boards have reviewed the ordinances and all of their edits are incorporated. So we're recommending approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. Other questions? Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you. Does this, because right now, planning would, it just still goes to the Planning Commission for their review, correct? So that we still have the public hearing and like a developer would have to still go through that process? This would be a layer on top of that?
Yes, this would be in addition to that. Really, all of our land use approval processes include a step of going to Planning Commission for their recommendation to City Council, unless it's administrative, in which case it wouldn't be going to any of the boards or commissions.
So if a development wanted to come in, was not wanting to exclude an open space, like they weren't looking for a waiver for providing the open space in their development, then that would automatically allow them to just go through planning and then move forward?
Right.
They wouldn't need that additional hearing?
Yeah. So if it's, if it's already subdivided land, and they're just coming in for a site-specific development through a PUD on a parcel, and there's no open space included, they would not have to go to the open space board for review unless they were adjacent to open space land and we determined that there was some material impact potentially that needed to be reviewed. But, but, but in a lot of cases, it wouldn't have to go to open space, it could go straight to Planning Commission.
I'm, I'm wondering if there isn't a way to have the, the valuable feedback from open space with planning so that it's a public hearing, they have access to that information, they can ask, so that there isn't so many more like months of review, that it could be something that could run like almost, I mean, concurrent, or I'm, I'm trying to figure out how.
Yeah, I think we try to think of things like, like, how could we do that? I mean, one of the issues and why this is, you know, it's quasi-judicial, and our current process suggests that it's part of the referral process. The problem with that is if, if we have a board or commission reviewing a land use case and it's impacting land use rights, we want to make sure it's a, it's being properly done as far as the process goes. So an informal review isn't really the right way to do it to meet those criteria. You have to have public notice, public meetings, a formality, because whether you're an opponent or a proponent, or the landowner, the applicant, we want to make sure that they have a fair hearing. So that's part of what we're trying to do here. So, you know, I, I don't know that a combined hearing with Planning Commission, because they're, they're really reviewing different things also. But, so I, I don't know that there's a great, I, I understand the concern, and if we had an option that we thought would consolidate and make the process more streamlined, you know, I think we'd be open to that. We haven't thought of one yet, though.
I was wondering, too, like, and maybe if they can't happen together, then they could happen, like, instead of waiting a month in between to add the time, like, it could, planning could be one night, open space, you know, is the next, public hearing is the next, so that the, you know, that information is there, there are public hearings, or maybe it's, you know, day after. I'm just saying.
Yeah, you know, we, we want to do that all the time. I, I think what we run into is it doesn't usually work well, because what happens is for these to be good hearing, like, if you go to the open space board or the parks board, they may have comments or conditions that the applicant wants to respond to. So if you're having the Planning Commission hearing the next week, then, you know, you create conflict. Like, sometimes it would work, but we don't like to operate in that manner because it creates issues and doesn't allow flexibility. So I know, I would, I would say we're also, with the comprehensive plan, we're hoping to do a, you know, one of the things that's in the budget, so if it stays in the budget, is coming off of the comprehensive plan, we'd actually be looking at, you know, a very comprehensive rewrite of our whole land use ordinance and process, because that's something we've talked about. So this could get changed during that time, but under our current structure, we think this is the best way to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Councilmember after.
So to understand the, the choices, so I don't think you're saying, well, let me ask you this question. Is, is the current process work, workable? Is keeping the current process a reasonable option?
So I, I think if we, if we don't adopt this ordinance and we follow the current ordinance as written, we, we wouldn't take land use cases to the Parks and Public Landscaping Advisory Board. There's no process to do that. So we, we do it by practice, which causes concern to, you know, to, to take an applicant through a process that isn't in our code. The, the open space code does have some guidance, but we also feel like it's not ideal because it doesn't give them criteria, and it doesn't give them a scope of what they're really supposed to be looking at within the context of any particular application.
And so, following up, the, would, would this rule change, ignore the PPLAB part for a second, let's just say an application that was already going to go to OSAB is still going to go to OSAB under this, or is going to have better criteria, does that, does the criteria or something else in this ordinance add time to the timeline? Or is the OSAB piece, assuming that's only involved piece, about the same?
I mean, I think this would add to the timeline mostly because, you know, there's public notice, and we would want to have a relatively complete application before we take it to any of these boards and commissions. I would also say that the, the other issue with the OSAB ordinance is it really says if you're adjacent to or it's materially impacting, it doesn't even talk about if there's a public land dedication being proposed. It's not in the ordinance, that they're weighing in on.
We would sweep in a broader set of applications, and the notice piece would maybe extend the timeline somewhat.
You mean, if, if we didn't adopt?
If we do, sorry, if we do adopt this, it's a, it's a broader set of applications, there's, there's no public hearing notice requirements that didn't used to apply, you're going to wait till farther, farther down the development timeline to take it to them. That, that's what's driving the timing thing?
Yeah, I, I think that the timeframe would be, you know, the way these applications go, we don't talk about this a lot, but I think a lot of you know this, is that when an application comes in, before you all see it, we work with them for several months on reviewing and refining the application. And so what we, what we don't want to do, I think, with this process is take an application that hasn't been vetted by staff and present it to the open space board or the parks board, because there may be substantive changes just from the staff review. So we, we have to kind of take it stepwise to actually be the most efficient and not frustrate the applicants by, you know, them getting direction from maybe a, a board and then staff having substantive comments that could contradict some of that.
I'm not going to beat this to death, but I, I assume you're doing that right now, right? You wait until that stage of staff review, or are you taking them earlier now?
We, we don't do it often, but yeah, we've been waiting till we get through substantive staff review before we take it to the boards.
Do you have any, and I'm sure you don't because you made this presentation, but do you have any magic ideas about how, how to achieve all this additional review without additional time?
Yeah, I think, I think that's, you know, for, for Councilmember Kern, I was trying to, to say that if, if we had a great idea, I think we'd, we'd bring it. I, I don't know that we do.
I'd hope so.
Other than we need to revise our whole process. Like, I think that's the magic bullet, is we need to get in and, and look at, hey, are there, are there development types that we could just do administratively? I would say that if we're doing administrative development, we may still want to take it to the advisory boards if there's parks and trails and open space involved. I'm also guessing those aren't the types of applications that will be administrative. If it's a brand-new development with public land dedications, it's probably going to have a bigger review process anyways.
That's helpful. Thank, thank you, and sorry for the dumb question.
All right. Did you have a question? Okay, yes, Mayor Pretend.
Yeah, I think the last point you made is really helpful. You know, we're not, we're not talking about like, you know, someone building a single home on a lot, and they're going to have to go through all these processes, right? We're talking about some pretty big developments that are going to affect open space, affect parks, affect public land dedication, and that is expected to be a long process. They're not like, oh, it should be a few months, we're done, right? And they're highly used to going through the process where I'm like thinking like Birdie Bar going like, wait, how do we do this? Welcome. But someone who's coming in to do a major development, I think, is going to understand the process. And if it usually, when it's that big, it usually goes before these boards anyway. It doesn't sound like the delay is significant. I mean, we're going to know months ahead of time when these meetings are going to be coming, so notice is just a matter of doing that early enough that it, it's not like, okay, fine, okay, well, let's do notice, now we got to wait two weeks. So I feel, I mean, is that fair that, like, on a big project, you're likely already taking that board, and the notice itself isn't what's slowing us down on bigger projects like that?
Yeah, we can often anticipate the notice a little bit. I mean, we, we, we don't like to notice something until they've addressed the staff review comments.
Yeah.
Not to get into the weeds on that.
Well, I guess, to, to, if you answered this question, I am highly concerned about real delays on top of a process that people tend to feel is already pretty slow and delayed. And some of that is to do with Louisville, but a lot of that is just to do with working with public entity, right? It's just, it is a long process.
Yeah, it's, it's a public process, it takes time. I would say, too, as you were, you know, giving your comments, we're a landlocked community with not a lot of big developments that we're anticipating to come in that would have big dedications of open space. So I'm also not overly concerned just from that aspect. I, I think it's good to have a clean code and apply it well, and it's probably not going to delay a lot of big projects, because we, we're not anticipating a lot of big new development projects.
On an ordinance, we have two rounds of public comment. So first round, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, Susan.
Hello, this is Susan McHeckern again, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Open Space Advisory Board, and I really wanted to thank Rob and his team for taking all of our suggestions into account in this version of the ordinance. And I would just like to say that after all I've witnessed with Redtail Ridge and OSAB's involvement with that process, I am, we are very strongly in favor of implementing this more concrete and practical wording for how the boards interact with these public processes. And OSAB is in the city charter. I think it's there for a reason because so many people in our community feel so strongly about how open space is developed and managed and acquired. And I just think it's really important to have that part of the public process in any big development. And Rob is right that we're probably never going to see another Redtail Ridge in the future in Louisville. But going through that process made me personally very aware of how important it was to systematize our understanding of what our role is. And we take our role, our advisory role and our voice of the citizenry who, who's interested in this topic very seriously. So our board is very much in favor of this ordinance, and I would just also like to add, please give us our QJ training as soon as this ordinance is passed, because just, there's a lot of technical detail that we really do need to, to understand better. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other? Nope. All right, back to council. Yeah, Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. So would the quasi-judicial rules that apply to us, that apply to planning when we're talking about this, so it, and it really limits, you're talking about public engagement and kind of addressing the community needs, would that also limit the interaction from OSAB and PPLAB, and I think I'm really thinking of OSAB, though, with the public before measures are coming? So they can't have conversations about the use with other members that are interested? And it would be very limited? I mean, like, I have to admit, it is extraordinarily difficult to not be legally allowed to have a conversation. And it is not just, it's, you cannot engage with somebody who is not on that board, actively on that board. And so I think, you know, I want to make sure that they, that everybody knows that, like, that is a big gift that you are giving up by having a quasi-judicial role. You lose the ability until the day of that hearing to engage with both the applicant and the public.
So I, I would, I think there was a question in there.
It was, like, will it apply? Will they, will they have to do, will that have to be the case?
Yeah, and it will, and I think that's one of the benefits, is it applied before. So as soon as they were acting and advising you all as a city-appointed board on a development case, they were quasi-judicial, and it wasn't clear, and this provides the clarity. But, but, but they are acting in that role. So whether you're an opponent or a proponent, you don't want anybody reviewing the case against the city's codes and putting evidence into the record that, or that is judging it on your behalf and advising you, I guess is a better way to say it, to be taking evidence out of that. Because if you're an opponent, you don't want the proponents talking to them. If you're a proponent, you don't want the opponents talking to them outside of the, you know, it just, it actually adds fairness to the hearing, I think, from our standpoint. Whereas if there's backroom conversations taking place, that takes away from the fairness of the proceedings.
Okay, thank you.
Other, yeah, Councilmember.
Are we doing questions, or are we talking now?
Either one at this stage.
So I, I have.
We have one more set. We have one more.
Okay, well, I'll say my thing and then.
All right. I mean, you can do whatever you want, I'm just saying.
I, I like the notion that this is going to, in all probability, exclude smaller projects just because of their nature. It would make sense to me to consider some sort of dollar threshold. You know, the, the project value has to be 10 or 15 million dollars or something, I don't know, maybe Director Zuccaro could come up with an appropriate number, but something that sort of, and it would be, you know, it's a line drawing exercise, but some bright line between big projects and small projects, and we don't, unless they want to go, we don't make small projects go through all of the extra process, in, in addition to the criteria that's already in the ordinance. So just throwing that out there.
I, I don't know that I agree with that. I don't know the, I don't know where we would draw the line, but I also think, I mean, to some extent, staff, is there, you know, I, I think in terms of materiality, I mean, there's sometimes there's going to be, I mean, I, I don't know whether a small project is, I don't even know what a small project, where you would differentiate, but, I mean, is, is that going to be, is this going to really bollocks up small projects?
Right, let, let me give an example of maybe a small residential subdivision, because if they, if they've never been subdivided, and there's probably a few of those out there, they have a public land dedication requirement to the city. So we may want to check in with these boards, those will often be cash and lieu because they're small. But we want to go to the boards and at least say, are you okay if this is cash and lieu, or would you prefer to have a public park even in a small subdivision? So I think there's so many variables, it, it's, it's hard to say from a size standpoint. So I do think that anything that's a GDP or a subdivision, a new subdivision, not a re-subdivision, should go to them just to make sure about the a resubdivision, should go to them just to make sure about the public land dedications. So that's hard to draw the size. I do think that if you're doing a site-specific PUD, it's rarely going to go to the boards the way we've set up the criteria. So if there's something in the Colorado Tech Center, it's already platted, all the public landscaping's in, all the public land dedications have been made, it's probably not going to, it's, almost none of those cases are going to go to these boards for, like, a single-lock commercial development, if that helps.
Yeah, I guess I'll just say what I'm trying to drive at is, I mean, I think I agree with Director Zucaro. In a perfect world, we would get input from boards on everything because input is valuable and helpful, and a lot of these are complicated, and we benefit from the advice. The point I'm trying to make is, like, for a small subdivision, we're adding months of costs and financing costs and, I mean, whatever they're doing, right, like, it may be significant that they have to extend their process by months. And, you know, I don't want to go too far down the rabbit hole, but like, at a time when we're trying to prioritize affordable housing and so on, adding time and expense to the development process is something I don't think we should take lightly if we can avoid it.
Yeah, we shouldn't take, I think what we're, we're focusing a lot on delays, and that's important because people have money in the game, and interest is accruing, and time is wasting. But there's a lot to be gained. We're not doing this because we're just wanting to slow down the process. We're trying to get good information from boards that have, you know, are going to have some specific knowledge to bear. Certainly, OSAB does, PPLAB will, on certain, pretty limited basis, but important. That's why, I mean, this elevates, in my view, it elevates the importance of that input, and it recognizes it for what it is, which is, it affects property rights, and it's really important for the process that we get that. And if we don't want that, we're going to miss a lot, and we're going to potentially run into quasi, well, I mean, what I understood Director Zucaro saying is that we're, we've kind of been riding the line on quasi-judicial already, and we don't really want to do that as a matter of good process and fairness. So, and I don't know, maybe I'm optimistic, too optimistic, but I don't think we're talking about months and months of delay, are we?
So I, certainly, we wouldn't try to delay anything anymore, you know, we're not trying to delay anything, but I would say there are circumstances where I just want everybody to be aware. I'm not saying this would be the norm, but something could be taken to one of these boards, and if they're having a public hearing, the board has the right to say, hey, I want more information, I'm going to continue the case, and they'll have to come back a month later. And that could add time to the process. We would maybe try to absorb it as much as we could into our overall process, but I just want everybody to be aware that there's some possibility it could extend timelines.
Does that happen now, that they can ask for, like, the information, new, more information to come back, and so therefore, like, the whole process is stopped until that information comes back to that board?
Yeah, that's typically how it works. Like, it would be just like if it went to the Planning Commission. You know, that's a required step before it gets to City Council. The Planning Commission has the right, not to delay a project, but if there's missing information or substantive information that they, that evidence that they ask for staff or the applicant to bring back, that often takes a month to come back for their regularly-scheduled meeting and to give staff and the applicant time to get the necessary information.
No, I mean, but that's not happening, is it not happening now with OSAB and PPLAB, where they can do that? Or is it more, like, here's the information, and we'd really like your advice?
I think it happens now, too. You know, for, just, there's past cases that, like, when Redtail went to OSAB, there were multiple reviews because they wanted substantive information, and we had to go research it and bring it back at their next meeting.
Let me push this a little further. Say, for just a second, that contrary to at least what OSAB has recommended, we don't pass this ordinance, and we say, no, we don't, we don't want to make them subject for the quasi-judicial rules. That, I think I heard you say, was not especially a good way of doing this, or you wouldn't have proposed the ordinance. What would you have to do to the input, or how would you have to adjust OSAB's role so they wouldn't be doing what they're doing now, which is arguably quasi-judicial? I mean, how much air do you have?
Right. So here's an idea, and I think City Attorney Kelly will probably correct me on this, but I'm going to, this is what I think is, what you're asking is, and I think there was maybe some intent for the original ordinance to do this, is that if OSAB is reviewing it, they could advise their staff, and then the staff can take their advice, but it's not, they're not advising the City Council. I think as soon as they advise the City Council on a land use case, it is quasi-judicial at that point, and there's different obligations. If they are, and this is where City Attorney Kelly can correct me, it's not ideal, but if they're just saying, hey, we're going to review this, we're going to maybe give some advice or input to our staff, who's part of the referral review process, but they're not communicating directly with City Council. Now, that, we got a lot of feedback from the boards and commissions, that they don't, they don't like, they don't necessarily like that or want that either, to be frank. Like, they want to be able to advise you. So you have to kind of pick one or the other, but I'll let City Attorney Kelly weigh in now.
Sure. Thank you. And Director Zucaro and I have had many conversations about this process, and it currently lacks, in my opinion, some appropriate direction to the advisory boards. I mean, you heard that PPLAB isn't part of the process at all, but historically, they've been made a part of the process without any criteria or direction or authority from the City Council. What has been happening, particularly with larger projects, looks very quasi-judicial. And so part of the purpose of this ordinance is to conform our process to the legal requirements that exist for providing applicants with due process. So if this ordinance isn't what you want, let us work on it some more, but we do want to solve a problem here, too. If what you want is for one or both of these boards not to be an official part of the process, then we need to do some work in that direction as well. But if they're going to be an official part of the process, and they're going to be making these recommendations to City Council that are part of the record that you review as your evidence, then they are part of the quasi-judicial process, and we need to not only have the ordinance reflect that, but also give them the support, the quasi-judicial training that was requested tonight, and everything that they need to serve in that role well, and be, you know, useful to the City Council and also conform to the legal requirements.
Thanks. Should we go back to public comment? Why don't we take, no public comment? Yeah, sure.
Questions and comments that came up. And just say, from the perspective of the Open Space Advisory Board, you know, we are part of the city charter, and I think that if you were to take us out of this advisory role to City Council, that would have implications for the city charter. And Attorney Kelly might be able to speak to that issue as well. But I would just like to say, I feel, and of course, I do have a personal opinion about this, but that OSAB is a really integral part of how the city operates and how citizens interact with the city. And I think it's really important to remember that when we're thinking about these issues.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any other public comment? Going once, going twice. All right. Back to council. Councilmember Hefner, and then councilmember.
Yeah, I'll be brief, because it's similar to my, what I said the last time, which is, I would, if it was up to me, I'd like to see some proposal to limit the scope of which, further limit the scope of which applications go through these boards, such that we're not, I think the scope in the draft ordinance right now is going to sweep a lot of applications through an advisory board process. This is an opportunity to streamline that and do it, whether it's, it could be by acreage, it could be by dollar amount, it could be by some other criteria, but to sort of ring-fence around who has to do the extra process and which projects would come directly to us. I mean, we'd still see them, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't send them. Right now, right, there are criteria in here about which projects go through the advisory board projects, or process, and which projects do not. And I would, if it was up to me, I would tighten those up and send a smaller subset of projects through the board process and the balance of them directly to us.
I guess that, maybe I'd address this to City Attorney Kelly, it's, do we, do we get out of the problem by limiting the scope of what projects we get in?
Sorry, let me just clarify. All the QJ parts of this I like.
Yeah, yeah.
So I keep the part that solves the problem.
Yeah.
For the stuff that's not going through the board process, the problem is eliminated. They're not hitting those boards at all, they're coming right to us, we're QJ anyway. For the ones that are hitting the boards, they're going through the QJ. Now I'll let you answer the question.
I agree with Councilmember Hefner's assessment, that it does eliminate the problem because they're not going to the boards without guardrails. So everything that is quasi-judicial is packaged well, it's treated as quasi-judicial. If it's not going to the boards, then it's, we don't worry about whether the boards are acting in a quasi-judicial capacity because it's not going to them.
They're just limiting the intake, essentially, of cases, and that.
Right. And I'm not sure that, and if that's the direction that the council wants to go in, I think that Director Zucaro and I can work on that some more. I'm not sure that's something, I certainly don't have any good ideas to propose for revision from the DICE to address that.
Yeah, I think we want time to contemplate that and work on it. We could try to come back with a more streamlined list, if that was council's direction.
Thank you. I'm going to look at my notes because it's late and my tank is starting to run on E here. So I think when I, when I step back and look at this from just in, which is like, in theory, I agree with the concept of QJ duties for these boards. I think when we look at our community, they value parks and open space, they've said this through ballot measures, community surveys, we've got a lot of guiding documents. So this, by adding QJ responsibilities to these boards, it reinforces that community value and our commitment to it. I hear the concerns about the timeline, and I'm certainly open to evaluating, are there, you know, different guardrails or the intake valve that we play with here? When I think about it, though, I'm wondering, in the end, what is truly going to be the delta here in the timeline? Because if someone comes to council and we add conditions or we deny because things weren't addressed, that the boards could have caught, we're also adding time to these applications as well, right? So I don't have as big a concern as others on this. In addition to the quasi-judicial training that was requested, I also would like staff to keep tabs on how this impacts your time so that we can plan in the future for FTEs and future budgets. Do we need more staff to support these sorts of initiatives? Because presumably, they add time commitments from staff in order to fulfill these duties. That's all.
Your thoughts? Everybody's running out of gas here a little bit. I know I am, too. So I guess, the, it sounds, well, let me, let me put it this way. Generally speaking, are pretty, are council members comfortable with quasi-judicial status for the two boards that are the subject of the ordinance? Is that a thumbs up?
And it's strictly when they're reviewing, like, these newer, large land use-impacted projects?
Well, it'll, we'll talk about that in a second.
Well, that's impacting my yes or no.
Well, I mean, if it were a big, if it were a big one, it would, I mean, we can talk in a minute about that. I'm just trying to get a sense of, if you said, no, we're not, we don't want to have it at all, then that's, that's fine to say, but.
It would impact all the project types listed in the ordinance, is the ones they'd see.
Councilmember Dixon actually answered my question.
Thumbs up or a thumbs down?
Yeah, but I think it sounds, it's more like, it's a, there's a legal reason for us to need to be doing this, that they're already performing a role, and it's just that it's not been formalized, and this goes ahead and allows it to be formalized, instead of us backing it up and saying, don't advise council directly, but instead, give conversation to your staff, like, to a staff member who can then talk to us. Okay, thank you. So, yeah, that's fine.
And then this, excuse me, the second issue is, I think, more trying to limit scope of, for efficiency purposes, for time-money purposes, the scope of the projects that actually get sent to these two boards for quasi-judicial treatment. That's what Councilmember Hefner was suggesting. I don't think you had proposed anything in specific. You talked about dollars, maybe, but that's something we could, we could.
Yeah, I mean, my thought is the one I originally said, which is, something to try and separate out the larger projects, which can probably bear the cost and delay, from smaller projects that, you know, there are, I think, and I think this is what Rob said, small subdivisions out there that, you know, it may be a burden on them. Maybe there's not a lot of them, but I would love to find a way to carve those out. The only thing that makes me concerned about that is that, you know, it's a burden for whom? Certainly, it's a burden for a developer to do that, the applicant. But, you know, the people living in that subdivision might well want to have, I mean, they may want a park. And to have the input, a quasi-judicial input of PPLAB might actually be really important to them, regardless of the small delay. I mean, it's not, that's what I'm trying to get at, is what is the cost of limiting the kinds of projects that go to quasi-judicial review?
Yeah.
And I get that we want that to be part of the big projects. I don't think anybody would disagree. But the small ones, I mean, there's, there may be compelling reasons. Yeah. I agree. It's a balancing, I mean, and I, and then we can move on. But for me, the counterfactual is, right now, as the ordinance is drafted, not every development application is going to. We could write an ordinance that says, every development application must go to PPLAB and OSAB, no matter what.
Right.
And that's not the ordinance we have. We have one that draws a line at, if you're making a public land dedication or the other criteria in here, then you must go. criteria in here, then, then you must go. I would ring fence that a little bit more and say, and you have to be a large enough project that it's sort of worth everybody's time to do it. I'm not hearing really any support for that idea, so I will rest my case.
Well, I don't know, I'm not suggesting you're, yeah.
So I'm thinking of, like, we've had a couple of, like, smaller projects come to us recently, and, like, you've presented them to us, Rob, where they aren't doing it, or they're adding a little park. Like, there's the new proposal that was brought to us, like, I think we were just, like, it was a plan review thing, idea, for townhouses and condos out off of Highway 42 by D-Lo, and they were going to put in their own little park space. So would that then mean, like, if we said, okay, yeah, if your park's not in excess of one acre, you don't have to take this before P-Plab as far as, you know, a requirement of the, of the development coming to us? Is that, is that kind of the thing? Because it is a small park dedication that they're doing, thinking of doing?
Right. So the way we've tried to craft it is, a lot of projects, especially multifamily projects, will have their own private parks. That would not be reviewed by the Parks Board. If they were going to make it a public park, then yes, then it would go to the Parks Board. So it's probably project-dependent at that point, whether there's a public access to the park or it's just private for their residents.
The, and the reason I bring that up is, I think that probably some of the small projects, Councilmember Hefner, that you're thinking of, most likely, they're not going to be doing, like, public land dedications for open space or parks anyway. It would be something more internally for that community versus, you know, I think that probably it is only big projects that are going to be doing the land dedication. So do we have a, what is the requirement right now for that? Like, as far as, like, I mean, I know we have some on the big projects, but like, if it is like a small, little...
So public land dedication's 15% of a residential project and 12% of a commercial project, but if it's already platted, then they've already met the obligation. So there are projects that have already paid cash-in lieu or dedicated other parks and open space, and they're coming in and redeveloping. So let me say it that way. If you're doing a redevelopment, you often don't have a minimum public land dedication requirement. Doesn't mean they won't bring public spaces into their development, and I think that's part of the question here, is if you're a smaller development, you're redeveloping, and you're bringing public spaces in, is that something we want to go to the Parks Board if it's relatively small? Or is there a threshold, is what I'm hearing?
I do admit, I think I'm not in favor of a threshold. I think that if, as a community, what we're hearing is, if you're putting in a new project and it's not already platted, we would like you to have some form of, like, public space in here, and either, if they don't want to do that because they want to put in more buildings, then I don't see the harm in having, you know, parks and having open space give us their, you know, their advice or their, their two cents on that topic. And I think this is, it would just require them to go and say, this is why we feel that this is too tiny to be dedicated space, and we'd rather give you money to put it somewhere bigger.
Okay, we've got to sort of bring this to a close one way or another. It seems to me that this is new, that we're doing this, and we don't know exactly how, there's uncertainty right now about how much delay and how much is going to get, I mean, we kind of know it's going to get swept in there, but we don't know exactly what the impact is going to be. It seems to me, one way of saying that is, you know, we, we pass an ordinance, and if we find that it is problematic in the application, we can come back and change it. I think if we want to go down the path of trying to establish a threshold, what do we sort of continue this to a date certain, let staff and, and City Attorney try to think if there's ways of separating the sheeps from the goats in a way that is principled and useful and so forth, or we pass the ordinance? That's, I guess, what I would figure the, the two basic options in front of us right Pass the ordinance or send it back for more work? Go ahead, Councilmember Fahy.
I will move that we pass ordinance number 1882, series 2024, and ordinance amending Louisville Municipal Code Chapters 2.20 and 4.02 concerning the quasi-judicial roles of the Open Space Advisory Board and the Parks and Public Landscaping Advisory Board.
Second. Any discussion? Or any more discussion? All, let's see. We take a roll call.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Laye?
Hold on for just a second. I forgot to close the public hearing. Sorry. Now we make the, you make your motion.
Okay. Now I will move to approve ordinance number 1882, series 2024, and ordinance amending Louisville Municipal Code Chapters 2.20 and 4.02 concerning the quasi-judicial roles of the Open Space Advisory Board and the Parks and Public Landscaping Advisory Board.
Second.
No.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Mayor Laye?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, we have the last item on the regular agenda, is appointment of two councilmembers to serve on committee to review board and commission applications. I have had two expressions of interest, and one with maybe a little more of a kind of arm-twisting than the other, but, and that would be the Mayor Protem and Councilmember Are we comfortable? Do you have any? Oh, I didn't even ask for a staff presentation on this. I probably should.
No need. Just go ahead.
Okay. I mean, it is, it is a smaller group of, of openings this year than, than fewer years or past years, I think.
There are slightly fewer openings, and there are no openings on the Planning Commission, which generally means we get fewer applicants.
Yeah. So it's a little more limited.
I'm thinking now that planning, that P-Plab and OSAB are quasi-judicial, we're going to get a whole ton of applicants now.
Yeah, that may be, yeah. I guess, making a tell you. All right, are people comfortable with those choices? Give me a...
Good.
Good. All right, I think we're decided on that. Great. City attorneys report.
I have no report, thank you.
All right. Council comments, committee reports, and identification of future agenda items. Yes?
Just a reminder that we have the EVC meeting tomorrow morning, I believe, at 10:30. I should get that right. 10:30. And then I'll just read from our website, but there's a Marshall Fire Pet Memorial unveiling Sunday, October 20th, at 2:00 PM, or from 2:00 to 3:30 PM at the Arboretum. Here at the Lewis Arboretum, we invite the residents of Lewisville to participate in our commemoration of the beloved pets who were lost in the, in the Marshall Fire on December 30th, 2021. Firefighter and artist Michael Garman designed and created the sculpture with the hope that it would provide a meditative space for the residents of Lewisville. The event will include an onsite craft activity, allowing attendees to contribute to the experience. So...
Thank you, and thanks to Lewisville Rising for the work that they've done on that. That's a huge, wonderful piece of public art that's, I think is going to mean a lot to a lot of people. I, I saw an article which just happened to pop up on my feed. It's an old article that reported on the CU study last year about animals and the loss of animals, things that could be done better in the future to help sort of be, you know, do animal, animal preparedness or preparedness of people to take care of their animals in the event of a, an emergency. I, I hope that if the powers that be deem it appropriate, that maybe there could be some, I think we did some stuff on the website, somebody could hand out things, because I think that would, that might be meaningful, just a suggestion. I don't want to debate it too much, but that might be a, I don't think we can debate it because it's not on the thing, but I, I really want to make as much use out of the dedication as we can, and that'll give people something really tangible to do. But other thoughts? One of the things that, just to be thinking about, this is like, maybe, I don't, sort of a future agenda item, is the idea of putting our committee reports and maybe even future agenda items, at least some of this earlier in the meeting than we do. I don't know, you like that? Yeah.
Well, since I didn't do it earlier, I can just say it now, but it's really only relevant to all of you. The message, the decision that we made to support, publicly support the RTD ballot measure, it, Dr. Cog is just asking for the municipalities to vote, and it was supposed to be done a week or so ago, and there were just not enough municipalities that had made a decision, and they think there are enough now, so I'll be expressing that opinion forward to the rest of Dr. Cog.
That, that is something that I think the Metro Mayors are doing, I think MMC, the Metro, let's see, no, the Northwest Mayors and, and County Commissioners Group is also going to send, there's going to be a lot of these efforts. I hope they'll be successful, too. Other things, anything else? Okay. But if we're going to have this earlier, folks who are on committees, we're going to expect that you, you know, have stuff to say.
So my, my only concern with it is, like, here it is 10:22. If we had made a lot of the beginning stuff even longer, this might be, like, closer to 11:00. So that's, that's my only concern with it, is, you know, a lot of it is updating the rest of council versus the public, so just maybe...
I don't know, I think the public has a lot of interest. It's a good question. Think about it. Just think about it. We're not making any decisions tonight. All right. All right. Is it to propose a motion to...
No, it is to mention that perhaps we could do some kind of announcement about our involvement, or lack thereof, in Rocky Mountain Airport. There are a lot of people who are questioning why we're not doing anything about the airport noise and the flyovers and things like that. So if we could explain to them why we backed out of the roundtable and what we're going to be doing going forward.
Anybody have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Good. Thank you, folks.